Test, test, test.
Hello, hello. Want to get closer?
We have also put it in, it's posted in the senior center in the monthly newsletter. That started in February and that's continuing ongoing until our membership is up. I personally went to one of the more well-attended lunches, we're about forty-five people, and said to the people there, "We are here for you. You would be great, members, to be on our council on aging. Please join us." And I gave everybody a little reminder in case they wanted to join as to when the meetings were, which is the first Thursday of the month at ten o'clock. We have a couple of members who are in both of the Lions Clubs and they are presenting to their Lions Club's members that they, there's an opportunity for people to join the council and to spread the word. And also people, there are certain people have said, "Oh, there's someone I know that I might think might be interested." So we are continuing to do that. And though the newsletter reminders will continue to go out. We have had, four people have put into Talent Bank forms and I even sent invitations to, multiple invitations to those folks and a reminder on Monday that tomorrow is our next meeting. So thank you for considering our vote. We want to make sure that we, as a council, can continue to function, in other words, to have a quorum on a monthly basis. And if we are met with the problem of having more people interested than could currently fit at the reduced size, we would be more than happy to come back here and say, "You know what? We think we should expand the council because we have a lot of interest."
So we are, just that you know, we are taking, it is part of our consent agenda tonight to reduce you from the nine to the seven, so that will be happening by the end of our meeting.
Okay, terrific. And one other thing, the council on aging is for the second year, has a community hero award. That with the help of Susan Robey has been put on the council on aging website nomination forms. It can be a senior who has done public service and volunteerism for the Ashland community or can be an individual, a group, or an organization who has done particular work to support Ashland seniors. So I would like to invite all of you to go on that website. If you think of anybody who you would like to nominate, please do that and as well as the wider audience. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, Donna. Appreciate you coming.
I have a really quick question.
Sure.
Go ahead, back.
Sorry. So just, just for the people that are watching, can you talk a little bit about what the council on aging does and what kind of, like, if there's programming or things that, you know, what, what people, what your, what your council does?
Yes, the council on aging, as I said, it meets once a month. Our meetings generally last about an hour and a half, two hours maximum. And our primary role is to provide advice, counsel, support, you know, community connections to the, for the senior center and to support the senior community in Ashland. The senior center director and her staff meet with us on a monthly basis and we go through the programming, we talk about their needs, we kick around ideas, we help advocate or bring up, you know, any concerns that we might have or particular concerns about particular seniors, groups of seniors, trying to expand our reach, you know, in support of the Ashland senior community. Anything else? Thank you.
So just a reminder. Which one are you?
Your town hall.
Your town hall, okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to say we're seeing a lot of stuff on our screen. If you're on Zoom, you're seeing that as well. Our Board of Health yesterday did have some Zoom bombing, so we are not letting anyone take their cameras off and, okay. So we're not, we are not allowing you to take your video off and we are not allowing you to unmute. We will unmute you. That is why if you want to share during community participation, you need to use the raise hand feature. If you're not sure where that is, if you look at the bottom of your screen where it says reactions, you push that and at the bottom it has the raise hand feature. So you can go ahead and raise your hand. Seeing none right now. Oh, okay. We're going to keep moving forward. There's some stuff going on technically, but that's okay. We have a legal update. Lisa Mead, our lead town council is here. Lisa, welcome. Make sure you turn on that microphone and pull it a little bit closer to you. There you go, to give us an update on all things legal.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members to the board. At least some things legal anyway.
Some things legal.
So just to start off, I'm going to go through high level, some litigation that, you know, obviously it's not a strategy, but just to tell you where things are. So you might recall that case with N-Star and EverSource Energy that we haven't heard anything since 2021 and we continue to not hear anything, which is good for the town. So they've not had any recommended decisions at this point. Not really sure what's happening, but that's where that is. The, the issues with Burnham Circle are being worked out, so hopefully that'll be settled in short order. There is a draft settlement agreement that's been circulated and so hopefully that will be resolved. UGC and Gainer, there was a trial on the case of UGC versus Gainer about four weeks ago now, maybe three, four weeks ago. And we participated in that. We had some witnesses that were there. The judge indicated at the close of the trial, he thought that there would be a decision within the week or so. Well, because, it was because of the kind of the decision, they were taking verdict slips and not actual, like, not an actual findings of fact, but that decision hasn't yet been rendered. So we're still waiting on that. The other case is Gainer versus UGC in the ZBA, which we are party to. And that is Gainer's challenge of the 40B approval. And of course, the, that case hinges on the decision of the other case because the case is challenging whether or not UGC had site control. The other case is about the purchase and sale agreement. So, but that has, that is supposed to have a trial this year. There is a pre-trial conference scheduled in April. So it's, you know, one hopes that the UGC versus Gainer case comes out soon, so that will help resolve or dissolve the other matter. So that's where those are. It could, it could. I mean, the bottom line of the case, the ZBA case is that there's no site control. And if the court says the PNS was valid and awards the PNS accordingly, then that's the end of that. We have been very busy with the town since last fall, buying and selling and exchanging real estate. So we, of course, closed on the Fafford property at the end of the year. We've closed on the purchase of the UCC land recently. We haven't yet closed on the conservation restriction purchased by the Superior Valley trustees because the conservation restriction is being reviewed by the Commonwealth. And so until that's done, there won't be any technical closing on that, but that's in the process. As you know, as part of the Main Street project, there's a lot of underground utility work happening in order to help facilitate that next door with the Kramer property. Tonight, you're going to have on your agenda the granting of an easement to Kramer to allow his utilities to come through the driveway at town hall. So we've been working on that. It's been a very interesting process related to title issues. So if that's something that you're interested in, like we are, that's been an interesting process. Nonetheless, Diane actually has been the motivating force behind that and so that's just about done. And hopefully we'll be, have that all resolved and recorded by next week, so that won't hold up that process at all. The Hopkinton Land Trust parcels that were finally approved at town meeting, the attorney for the Hopkinton Land Trust has all of the deeds that we drafted for that and we're waiting on his review. We had an exchange yesterday, actually. He's out of town until next week. So we still don't, we don't have their approval of it, but when, once they approve, then you know, you're going to have a vote that says you accept it and we'll go forward from there. So I don't, I don't see anything in the, in the way of that. And then the final thing, of course, is the MOU and the lease with Framingham State with the Warren Conference Center that Jen's been taking the lead on and I've been helping her out with the MOU and the lease agreement. So that's, that's actually coming around full circle as well. Additionally, we've been doing various troubleshooting with the old fire station next door and the soon-to-be-opened brewery.
Really soon or?
Couple of weeks. But if you need a pallet, go next door. The, we've been very busy with the planning department. Obviously, we did a lot of work to get the MBTA zoning passed in the fall. The ADU zoning will be up, the revisions for the ADU that were as a result of the changes in the law at the end of last year. Those final regulations were adopted at the end of January. And so Pete's working on revising the bylaw and I've been working with him, so that'll be on the spring town meeting warrant.
Lisa, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Did we have to make a lot of changes? Did we, because we didn't have an ADU bylaw, did we? Or I don't know for sure.
I think you have some kind of accessory dwelling bylaw, but so it'll, yeah, it'll be a wholesale change, yeah, to meet the new requirements.
So they've, they've approved it at planning and have they had their?
We haven't approved anything yet.
Oh, okay.
Pete's drafting it.
Okay.
Right, right. But it will, his goal is to have, his goal is to have it done in draft form in the next week for my review and then it'll go to the planning board for public hearing and move forward.
But it should be ready for spring town meeting.
Oh, yeah, definitely be ready for spring.
I mean, it has to be, right?
Well, it doesn't have to be, I mean, you know, it's not like it's the MBTA 3A zoning, right? So the, the law is now that essentially an accessory dwelling unit that's 900 square feet or less and/or half the size of the existing structure, whichever is less, can be built by right on conforming piece of property, period.
Right.
Right? And so if you have that basic information, you can go get a building permit for that today. The issue is there are some things that you want to control around that. And also, it's good to give guideposts and maybe the town, and I don't know what Pete or the planning board has in mind, but maybe you want to let, have by right ones and then maybe you want to have some that are by special permit. So for example, I have a more rural community who doesn't mind if the ADU is 1,000 square feet, right? And on a certain size lot and therefore they're making those on special permit, right? So there's some nuances that, you know, the planning board may want to have, but the basics you want to have in a bylaw, just so there's a, you know, a clear path and that the building inspector knows what he needs to look at and move forward. Anything on a non-conforming lot, it can be by special permit for non-conformities from the ZBA like anything else is right now. Or you could make it by right, that would be your choice, but you don't have to.
Okay, great.
And then, of course, we've been very busy with the Main Street 40B project and reviewing all of their submissions and the peer review. And as I was saying a little bit before the meeting with Ms. Bennett, that we just got our response from the traffic, the response to the peer review response to the traffic. So we're still waiting on our peer review person to review that response. But there is a, the continued meeting is this Tuesday evening. So that is on there. And then the town had a new 40B project filed, which we anticipated on Waverly Street. And that opening, that will be on March 27th, is that, 24th, 25th? But it's that week in March. And so that will be an opening, which will be similar to the opening of the Main Street 40B where they'll do a presentation, introduce the project to the board, and then the board will approve the hiring of peer review folks and then they'll be off and running. So the board, ZBA is going to be very busy over the next six to seven months, going back and forth between these two projects in addition to the, the regular work that they have. And you'll be seeing a lot of me and potentially Adam, but, you know, mostly me on these projects. We also did an IMA for regional health services. You know, we have miscellaneous items that we've dealt with, that's litigation, that is just things that we can get rid of in a pretty timely fashion. We had a case that involved a criminal matter, but there'd been a public records request associated with it or a subpoena associated with it, so we had to handle that in the district court, same way the town was sued as a defendant as part of a condo collection, condo fee collection matter, which is not unusual. So somebody doesn't pay their condominium fees, condominium association sues them under chapter 183A, section 6A. And if the town is owed any taxes or anything, they're made a party to that lawsuit just for notice purposes. So what happens is we work it out and figure out where all of that is and make sure that our lien is, has priority. And then we don't, basically don't have to do anything else, but we do have to be involved in the beginning of that. So we had one of those cases, Jen and Diane and us, we worked as a team to avert two bid protests, right? Which is really good.
Congratulations.
Which is very good. And then, of course, we have various enforcement matters, public records and open meeting law, but it's been a pretty busy four or five months, I think.
Always. Lisa, just to follow up, you and I, so here's a board, we've talked about communication and things like that. You and I had a conversation earlier and I just want to sort of review that so that if any of our members have questions. So right now, how we handle it, we get an email in to us as a board and I, as chair, respond to that person without copying the rest of the board. And one of the things we said chat about, she's like, "Yes, that's a good way to do it." But we talked about what the next step could be so that instead of a conversation with someone, if I take my email and give it to Susan and ask her to put it as part of the board packet moving forward, so that you see my response or whoever is chair, and then if you feel like you still want to communicate with that person, you can then reach out to them directly. And that will then keep us from either having, you know, a discussion via email or any open meeting law.
Right, so the, the base rule is that even though it's an inquiry from the citizen to the chair, if the chair were to include you on a response, if it's a matter that's under your authority, which is just about everything, right? So if the chair responds to that person and includes all of you, that's actually a deliberation, right? So it's a violation of the open meeting law. And so when I talked to Yolanda, I thought this was the best way to do it. So if she provides that to Susan and then you all get it at the same time when the packets are made available, it's not a violation because it's distribution material. And then you can see exactly what the communication was and if you wanted to follow up yourselves with that person individually, you know, have at it.
If anybody chooses to do that, I think it would be best to let the chair know that you're going to make that response as well.
Right, yep.
That way we're working on the same thing and not, the left doesn't know what the right's doing.
Right, yeah, that, that's a great idea, but that, that'll complete the full circle.
So that's a great idea because that's something I know that has been, you know, a concern of mine, just.
Right, making sure people get responded to.
You know, I.
So it's sort of out there.
This is out there as anybody, you know, so. Would it be too much work for Susan to, perhaps instead of waiting for our packet to forward us?
Can't, so, right, so that's what we're trying to avoid. The only reason she can include it in your packet and not have it a violation of the open meeting law is that once that packet goes out, it's a public document and so everybody can see it.
Okay, got it.
So the, the process was instituted probably seven or eight years ago because what was happening is the chair would then copy everybody and it, and it's a violation. And in fact, we were, had a chat with the Attorney General's Office on a number of times because of it.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody have any other questions for Lisa or, yeah, go ahead, Claudia?
I just had a couple of questions. What potentially the CGC court case and that, what implications are there for us in that?
You mean the UGC?
The UGC, yeah. So the, the first case, the validity of the purchase and sale agreement in and of itself, we have no interest or reliability or anything like that. We were witnesses for certain reasons, but we're not a party to that lawsuit. It does, however, impact the, the Gainer versus UGC and the ZBA because the decision in that case will fully inform how that, the ZBA case will go. And the impact for the town is, is if that comprehensive permit is found to be invalid, well, that's a big deal for the town, right? So that would, that's the impact for the town in that case. We go forward with the trial on the Gainer versus UGC and the ZBA, it's like any other zoning case in Superior Court. So we would be participating in a limited fashion. Always the applicant carries the water is what we like to say in this instance. And so UGC would carry the water on that. You would have some legal fees associated with it, but not as if we were actually trying the case. Well, the pre-trial conference is in April, that means the trial date is set. I believe it's in, not May, but it's, it's in the summer. And, you know, it's, the case isn't going to be as long as the other case was, no, because it's a, it's a pretty straightforward zoning case. But it's a zoning case based upon one issue, was there site control or not? Superior Court.
And then if there was, and so that's why the trial beforehand that's going on now, we're waiting on that decision.
Right.
Because that's going to tell them.
Right, but we, I suspect if that decision doesn't come down, the judge isn't going to go forward, but that, there's two separate cases, so, right.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other question I had was about 61 Waverly. So the fact that, you know, that has been sold to a new developer and we weren't notified or anything, have, are you, is there anything that says that that's inappropriate?
No, in fact, it says quite the opposite. So there are, Michael asked me to, to look into that. So, um, there are, um, Michael asked me to, to look into this. So, they're allowed to make a transfer of ownership, um, even after a decision has been made. But before a decision has been made, well, it's during the project eligibility process. So long as that person qualifies as DHCD or EOHLC and Mass Housing would review it, they can do it. So, it's not, it's, it's a, there's a provision to allow it in the regulations.
Can I follow up to that? Because the plan that we see now is drastically different than the, than the plan that we responded to Mass Housing about, so.
Correct, but it's the same number of units.
Either one, pick one and turn it on.
Pick a mic.
So, um, it's got like different entrances and, so, so why does Mass Housing ask for comments?
Because the regulations tell them to.
Okay, because I, I guess it's hard for us to kind of wrap our heads around this because, yes, the units are the same, but the site plan is different. And we felt that Mass Housing was looking for comments on not just like the size of the building, but actually, they make it, make it very clear, they don't care what we think about in terms of the size of the building, but some of the other aspects like the safety and the traffic, so, I just.
But those are all going to be, so, I think Mass, uh, uh, look, we're, I'm happy to direct a letter to Mass Housing saying, what did you do here? And, uh, the answer's going to be, we're allowed to do this under the regs, but I'm happy to direct a, a letter. Their position's going to be, their, their position's going to be that all of that gets reviewed in the comprehensive permit process. Mass Housing doesn't approve a project based upon the, they don't approve project based upon the size, the entrances, the, the stormwater, the traffic, that's not what they do. They do eligibility, SHI, you know, I mean, you know, you've submitted comments that raise all of those things, and what happens? Right, so.
You can address this through the ZBA process.
That's exactly right, and so, that's exactly what they're going to say. It's the same number of units, and the, the developer meets the requirements of an eligible developer, and that all of those issues will be addressed during the ZBA process.
We don't have any idea why that, um, transfer took place, do we? Why the other developer, uh, decide, decided ultimately to?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
I don't have any idea.
Well, it's, it's the same with ten to sixty Main Street, right? The initial project that was before us, not before us, but before ZBA, three years ago, was a different developer. And then, when it came back, it was, they had changed developers.
But it wasn't a forty B then, was it?
No, it wasn't, it was a.
No, it wasn't a forty B, but still, it changed.
Yeah, well, I would imagine it would change from one developer to the next. I mean, the fact that, um, that cha, that changed to be a forty B is different, right? Where this was.
Yeah.
Any other?
You know, it could have been, you know, who, I, I don't, I don't know, but there's, uh, you know, a litany of what reasons why. Financing, experience, availability, you know, all kinds of stuff.
I was kind of hoping there was some, something going on that might ultimately cause its downfall, that's what, that's why I asked.
Never know, maybe still. Good, any other questions, comments, concerns for Lisa? No, okay. Thank you, it's greatly appreciated that you come in and give us an update.
My pleasure, nice to see all of you.
Good seeing you.
See you on Tuesday.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, so, I think Mark might have had a problem or stuff, something was going on. Mark, I do see your hand is raised. We are going to allow you to unmute, but we're not allowing cameras on. So, if you want to, uh, if we can unmute Mark, and, uh, Mark Sony to give us.
How's that?
Hey, Mark.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Oh, yeah, I was on, I was, I was waiting for everything to get set up and, um, I need to put the, my TV off for the YouTube channel and just to see if I missed anything.
Nope, we just had some technical difficulties. So, what would you like to comment on today, Mark?
Okay, um, through the chair, chairwoman and person to our town manager. Can I go, can I do that?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. The town manager received my latest email.
Mark, I don't think it, when, when did you send your latest email? I, I, I'm a few days behind, so, if you sent it within the last few days, I have not seen it.
Oh, it's, it's the, um, I commented on your town manager article and the project overload part of it.
Oh, okay, well, thank you.
And I put, I, I put in a, a pretty good, um, two paragraphs of a comment.
Okay, well, I can't wait to look at it.
And, um, the other, the other thing is, um, I went to the co, no, yes. Uh, let me, let me do this again. Has there been any progress when I came into the office on my idea?
Uh, no, you, uh, believe you were going to go upstairs and talk to Pete, correct?
Yes, which I did, and which I did, which I did talk in the planning board, too.
Oh, that's right, because you were going to speak to them the next night.
Yes.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you got a chance to do that, Mark.
So, I was just wondering, you, you, you told, you told me on pizza that night that once the comprehensive plan gets done, then it'd be, that would probably be a good time probably to start, start that.
Um, it's not a bad idea, yep. I think that was the, I think he steered you in the right direction.
Is that, is that, would that be the same way as you're thinking?
Maybe, but Mark, maybe we should talk about this offline. Do you think?
Well, because I'm not sure what he's asking, right?
I know, that's one.
So, I would say, Mark, maybe follow this up with a direct conversation with Michael in person or, you know, over the phone. It does not sound like it's quite related to select board information.
Well, it's, it's, it's not, it's.
Okay.
It's, okay, again, no, okay, I'll, I'll end it this way. So, Mr. Town Manager, can you send me an email?
Yeah, what's, um, what's, yeah, why don't we, why don't we, why don't I do that, Mark? And I'll respond directly to your email, how's that?
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, that's it, no cameras, right?
No, no cameras, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, okay. Okay, muted him again, great. Uh, next on our agenda, I'd like to welcome Rob Share, former chair of the Select Board, still our representative to the MBTA Advisory Committee. Thank you for continuing to do that, Rob. And he's going to give us some updates on public transportation. Uh, we went, I've given him fifteen minutes to give us an update. I believe there's a presentation, yep, it's on the board, uh, on and back of us. Uh, there's going to be some changes coming with the commuter rail, and we felt it would be good to share with us as well as with the community. And I think it's available on that computer, Rob.
Yeah, I see it here.
Okay.
And, uh.
Can we share it via Zoom as well, or will the camera be able to pick it up?
Hey, by the way, thanks, uh, great seeing all you guys again.
Good to see you too, Rob. Mr. Retiree.
Yes, um, you know, every time I leave an organization, things get really challenging, you know?
Actually.
You know, I mean, anyway, um, I don't, uh, I'm not sure how to advance this, uh, do I?
Just use the arrow.
Oh, okay, all right, so, um, yeah, so I have fifteen minutes. There was a number of things I just wanted to touch on. I originally asked for, um, you know, this meeting to talk about the fiscal cliff, but one of the updates, of course, is that the governor did include it in the budget for next year to fund the T using what, what is colloquially called the millionaire's tax. And you guys probably know the actual name for it, but I don't remember. But it was, it was earmarked for education and transportation, so it's really resolved that problem at least in one year, but I would just say, keep an eye on, on that. Um, all right, so, I'm going to do just a brief, and most of you, I think, are pretty familiar with the MBTA Advisory Board and the fact that I'm your representative on it. Uh, but just for the sake of, um, a quick review for anybody who's watching, um, you know, there's like a hundred and seventy-four member cities and towns of the MBTA system, and Ashland's one of them. And actually, it's, as you all know, it's commuter rail services is, and rail service in general is very important to Ashland, both for folks using it for work and for social reasons and for general transportation, both, both, uh, blue collar and commuter. So, you know, we're very interested, of course, in the quality of the commuter rail service, and that's why we stay involved in this. So, uh, this is just a, a quick, uh, blurb about the member, didn't, um, you know, there's a new deputy director, Hannah Switlettowski, and she's, um, she's our direct liaison in the commuter rail committee. I am, of course, in, um, you know, I was hoping to have her come and meet you folks sometime, I think it'd be a good. She's a select board member in, um, uh, I actually don't remember, but it's like Canton or some town like that. So, she's, uh, she's on the firing line as well. So, um, you know, and, uh, you know, there's a number of committees. I, as I said, am chair of the now newly renamed, um, Regional Rail, Regional Passenger Rail Committee. And the idea there is that we're looking beyond the traditional commuter rail to more regional rail. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, in a moment because I think there's some issues for us there as that grows. But it's, you know, the idea there is that, um, commuter rail is changing to regional rail and not just commuter schedules as, as we've experienced. You know, uh, one of the, the updates they give us is that rail ridership, uh, Keolis is telling us has returned as measured by them to pre-COVID levels, but it's not the traditional commuter patterns. It's, um, it's what they call clock facing, so it's around the clock and also weekend trips. I don't think it's the kind of intensity, you know, you know, Brandy and I and other folks take the train and you know, you know, the parking lot's not as full as it used to be. But, uh, there's more, there's the same number of, of trips apparently, so, uh, that's kind of a big, uh, big thing. So, this is just a quick blurb on, you know, and you guys, I, I had this, you, you got it. So, you can look at it, it, for reference. Um, and here's the MBTA Service District. You can see there's the core communities around Boston which have subway, bus and commuter rail and the outer ones. But we are actually pretty involved in the MBTA because we, of course, host a commuter rail, um, station here. So, that's, that's kind of a big deal. So, that's, um, just kind of my quick, uh, review of the advisory board and the committees. Um, so, uh, in terms of the commuter, uh, the Regional Rail Committee, if any of you folks, as always, have issues or concerns or questions from tonight, I can bring it back. We meet at least on a quarterly basis with MBTA man, uh, management, and also the Keola CEO, uh, comes personally to talk to us about, uh, rail issues. So, you know, again, if there's questions or concerns that come up, feel free to, uh, let me know, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring that up. So, um, like, for example, we're meeting, uh, the week after next for an update on the spring schedule, but also, we're going to talk to them about the recent audit report that came out that I'll mention briefly. It's not on my list of points, but I, I, I should say I sent you a list of four brief points. I did remember that we should also at least touch base on the Alston project. Um, we had a meeting, um, we had a meeting with Dennis and Brian and Hannah. Dennis, um, of Senator Spilka's office and also Representative, uh, uh, Ja, uh, Jack.
Louis.
Louis, geez, I'm sorry, don't tell Jack. And, but it was, that was one of the things that came up, and Dennis was quite concerned about it. And Brian, who's on the NPO, and I don't know, maybe Yolanda, you've heard something, but of course, that's a huge project that's going to impact both our commuters and people taking the pike in. But Brian seemed to be saying, this is Brian Kane, the executive director, saying that the funding's on hold, and it's not, you know, a huge issue. Dennis had a different impression, he was quite concerned. But, uh, so I want to follow up with Dennis about that. Uh, but of course, and you folks probably know more than I know about, of course, uh, the federal funding is all in question now. So, how's that going to affect some of these big projects? I don't know.
Oh, interesting, hadn't thought about that.
But that is something, so I'm going to, you know, stay, stay involved with that and see, you know, what's happening with that because we're going to ask for mitigation and what's your plan and, you know, uh, keep them, you know, stay, stay informed on that, so. So, I, I didn't have that on my list, but I think it bears at least bring it up. The other thing was just, um, and we'll talk about it briefly, is the, um, the state auditor just released a report that came out, I think, yesterday or the day before, which I looked at it briefly, uh, where they audited MBTA's management of the Keolis commuter rail contract. And they had a number of issues which we can touch on briefly. I don't know if any of you heard about that or had a chance to look at it yet.
Not, no.
So, that's just, that's like breaking news. So, I think I mentioned earlier that the fiscal cliff is resolved for this year. Um, oh, so, the commuter rail procurement, so Keolis is going to have the contract for this year FY twenty-six and probably another one. But the thing to keep in, because I think they can extend it if I understand the, the timeline. So, the T is, I guess, likely to extend it because the terms are fairly favorable supposedly, but the new procurement is going to be quite expensive is the, is the word, you know, because costs have gone up so much and, um, the idea is that Keolis has been a bit under, uh, under stringent requirements. But again, looking down the road a few years, potentially big cost increases there. So, um, just a quick update on that. And we've, we've made it now to commuter rail that we're going to have, or the Regional Rail Committee, still having trouble with the new name, um, that will get periodic updates on the procurement and how it's going and what the issues are. So, that's going to be a big deal, especially for us, the quality of, you know, what's happening with, with the, with our rail service. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the East-West Rail Project. And, um, I don't know if, if folks, if you folks have heard a lot about it, I suspect some of you have. Um, I didn't, I just heard about it as a general term, but actually, it's, it's been going on for years and it's, um, it's be, really being pushed by the cities, like Boston, Worcester, Springfield, some of the western cities. And they've actually moved pretty well along on it. Now, this is, the, the East-West is basically from Boston potentially to Albany. Now, right now, that service is done like twice a day by Amtrak. But they're talking about, um, major expansion in frequency of, of trains and trying to be high-speed trains from Boston to Worcester to Springfield at least, and pushing on to Pittsfield. And so, those, uh, those plans are actively underway. Um, they just finished doing the Worcester Union Station over after about two, three years, really to make it suitable for that, for the East-West Rail. And they're, they're investing probably billions of dollars in track improvements all, all along the line. So, I think that's another thing that's, that's been underway, you saw the blurb that I put in. Uh, I think everything's probably in question now with, with the change in federal funding, but it's something that we should be monitoring because, of course, on that whole line, there's, as you know, four grade crossings, two in Framingham and two in Ashland. So, that puts us in kind of a unique position in terms of impact. Most of the other communities are not going to be dealing with grade crossings, but we will be. So, the one thing, you know, the plans call for something like ten trips a day, so that's additional trips that we're not experiencing now.
How many trips do we have now, do you know?
I, I made a mental note to myself to look at the schedule and do that number, but I did not. But then my grandson came for a visit. But, that's a good, I, I think it's like twenty, if I had to say off the top of my head. So, we're talking about potential in, you know, increase. And then that leads me, when you're looking at traffic impacts here, are people?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, especially downtown, are they thinking about it, there's a lot more trips and stuff, so.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, this seems to have a lot of push behind it. And so, um, I think our best role is like, you know, mitigation or being aware of how it might affect us and keeping an eye on what's going on and what the discussion is. Uh, Framingham will probably be a stop, uh, I think, um, and, uh, the next stop would be Worcester. So, um, so that's something potentially, you know, ideally, those crossings, they shouldn't be grade crossings, they should be submerged or, you know, something like that, so you could have real high-speed rail, but, um, so that's, that's an ongoing issue. I should also note, note, note that, um, I forgot to say, on the, the advisory board, our, our representative on the, um, MBTA Board of Directors is Mayor, uh, Thomas Koch of Quincy. But we also, of course, uh, Mayor Sisicki of Framing has been named to the MBTA Board. So, uh, we do have some, you know, some input in this process, of course, along with our Senate President and Representative Lewis. So, that's something to keep an eye on. But these things, uh, you know, would be impacting us if plans move ahead, and they're like a five-year plan. Now, that's probably all up in the air now.
I'm just going to add real quick to the East-West, so, I'm familiar with it. I'm just going to add real quick to the East-West. So, I'm familiar with it. Probably three years ago, they created a commission, and there are members representing the different areas of MAPC as well as the other planning organizations. So, the Metro West Regional Collaborative, I was asked if I wanted to sit on that because I was the chair at the time, and we asked an MAP staff member. So, Leah Robbins, who was our coordinator at the time, actually did go out and do all the different hearings and to hear stuff. And there is a lot of support, as Rob said, for this East-West Rail. Think about it. You're in Boston, you want to go west. You don't have to get into a car, and you can get on a train. So, there's a lot of conversation about it. And certainly, from a sustainability perspective, that's, that's easier if you're, you know, on a train versus cars and stuff like that. So, I think you're right, Rob. We do need to be aware of it. I don't know what mitigation, but certainly, we can look at that.
Well, you know, thinking, I'm remembering the quiet zone. And so,
Right.
You know, think about, do you want a quiet zone? That could be, if there's a lot of trains, that could be good. On the other hand, if there's a safety issue, you want a quiet zone. So, you know, there's that kind of thing to think about. So, the only other thing on my list was this recent audit report that came out. And I'm not going to belabor it, but the state auditor, so under her, under her charge, she audits various state agencies, and the MBTA was one, and they selected the Keolis procurement oversight manager of the Keolis commuter rail, which is logical because that's an enormous contract. It really is far-reaching. And so, they had a number of, it was all about the meeting performance regards. But they, the, they are saying that they, the T failed to collect 3.3 million in possible sanctions for Keolis not meeting their performance targets. That's kind of the headline. But they say the T doesn't have sufficient policies and procedures and monitoring in place to, to, to manage the Keolis contract. And I've seen some of that myself where, you know, you're not sure when you report something, where it's going, or, you know, if there's really good systems in place. And they talked about fare, not collecting, fare revenue reports not being adequate, and fleet maintenance reports, things like that. So, I could send that, I could, there's a general executive summary I can send along.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To you guys. And it's just, I think, you know, as well, I don't know, Brandy, if you had a report on revenue collection and what it's like, but I know in the Worcester run, it's, they've been getting better. They're about 60% collection. So, I don't know how they're doing on the, on the other side of it. But
Yeah, I would say there's definitely more, more revenue, you know, more, more ticket checking than there was. Part of it, I think, is because for a long time, there was staffing issues on the, on, on the commuter rail. I think it's a little bit better. Some days, not so much. But, but most days, it's relatively staffed well. And if it's staffed well, then they'll check tickets. So, but the ridership is definitely up. I can, I can see that. You know, it's, it's, it's the, the rush hour express trains going into Boston are packed. So, you know, there are times where, you know, I wonder, I like debate on whether to go to Framingham or not. And then, I don't want to go to Framingham because I want a seat on the train in Ashland. So, you know, so there's, there's that too. But, but I think that the, the renovations we, we did a year or so ago on the train station have been really good. I think this winter, it's wintered much better, like the stairs and everything.
Well, that's good to hear because someone asked me, they said, so those renovations that were done, what did they actually do? And did we benefit from anything? Or did they just?
No, the stairs, the structure is, is in a much, much safer.
That's good.
Much safer place. I would say that, you know, they still throw, I mean, I'm sure you see it, the salt everywhere. And I just feel like, like it's going to just eat away at the, at the concrete.
Let's, that goes actually to monitoring. Do you know, is anybody from, like, I complained directly to Mike Muller, the head of operations for the T about salt? They really need that much salt? But that's just like an unusual, like, there should be somebody coming out and say, well, an inch layer of salt everywhere is not really necessary, you know?
Right.
Like, what's going on here?
Yeah, so that it's protected.
Yeah, stuff like that. I did, I came there one time during a heavy rainstorm and rain, water was just pouring all over the platform out of these, the spigots were obviously clogged. And then I called and I said, oh, yeah, they checked out. They checked out immediately. Well, they needed to clean leaves out of the gutter.
Right.
I mean, come on.
You gotta clean your gutters twice a year.
Yeah. There shouldn't be me making, calling the T to say.
I did have a couple of questions. I was curious, you know, when we were going through the whole thing with our maintenance issues, I know that there were other stations along the line like South Borough that was having similar aging issues.
Yeah.
Has, has the commuter rail, like, are they, are they making maintenance a priority? Do you know if, like, so first, like, one is, I'm curious if other stations are going through what we went through a year or so ago. And then the other part of it is, do they have a real plan for, like, regular scheduled maintenance on a regular basis? Because I think, you know, I, I think of what they did for our station not as sort of an upgrade, but as sort of deferred maintenance.
Yes.
Oh, definitely. That was definitely deferred. It was definitely not an upgrade.
Deferred maintenance.
Just repair. Well, there's a term, what's the term they use? Write a repair? No, yeah, no. State a good repair.
Yeah.
So, that's what they're supposedly aiming for and doing better at under this new guy, Eng.
Okay.
So, that, that would be their answer. But I can ask specifically at our meeting, like, what's the plan? I mean, I'm sure there's a plan. But I've not seen any work, I mean, that I've noticed on the other stations other than Worcester, which is like brand new now.
Yeah, yeah.
Still working on it. But
And then the other one, one other question I had, I had somebody ask me about EV charging stations at the train stations. And I don't know if that's something that's on, on the MBTA's.
It is, I, I don't believe it is because it comes up periodically. People ask those questions. And it's, I don't think there's a direct plan right now that I'm aware of. But, you know, I'll bring it up again because it's a good, it's something they should be continuing with. There is a sustainability committee as part. I'm sure that's something they're pushing. And actually, the T is big on electrification. They're moving ahead. They decided not to buy, they bought some refurbished diesels, but they didn't buy any new ones. They're going to try to keep moving towards electric, you know, what do they call it? There's another term, push-pull or something where they're generating, there's battery-powered, but then it is assisted by overhead catenary lines. So, they're, they're, they're looking at pretty widespread adoption in the next, you know, 10, 15 years of, of electric locomotives. So, that's good.
Thanks. And thank you for, for, you know, advocating for us, you know, for Ashland.
It's good. It's, you know, it's an interesting thing to do. And it does touch on us a lot. So, anyway, yeah, happy to update you guys and come in. Yeah, go ahead.
If you know my man, Chair.
No, go ahead.
Rob, thanks for doing what you're doing. I appreciate that. Just to follow up with the update on the maintenance of the Ashland Station. I don't believe all the work has been completed yet. Have they painted the pedestrian crossover? I, I know that they said, they sandblasted it, but because of the weather, when they, when it was done, they held off on painting it. So, I just didn't know whether or not that was going to be something that we were going to see maybe late spring, you know, before the summer, before the summertime.
That's a good question, yeah.
And secondly, is, have they ever thought about putting solar panels, you know, in the parking lot?
That's another good one.
You know, like, like we have over at the high school and things of that nature to generate income?
Or letting us do it.
Yeah.
Well, my point being, you got just, just, just a thought.
I mean, there, there was a conversation probably seven, eight years ago where we saw what happened in the Framingham train station where it was taken over by the MWRDA.
Right.
So, they did the renovations. They handle the revenue coming in and out. And at one point, when it was the previous, when it was Ed Carr, we were like, oh, well, do you want to do something similar with the Ashland train station where they would take it over and we would help them and stuff? And of course, with Ed, Ed stepping down and with COVID and things like that, there's been no further conversation.
And for a while, there was very little parking. Now, it's starting to ramp up again.
Yep.
Right.
Just a thought, just, you know.
We could try to resurrect that, those discussions. If I was a T, I wouldn't do it.
Right. So, anyway.
I think it's interesting when you think about using it more to go destinations be other than Boston, right?
Yeah.
Right.
You know, if, if, if it does go further west, maybe Framingham becomes a destination because there's a lot of businesses and, and that, you know, just kind of an interesting.
Or even getting out to, if you can get on a train here and go to Springfield, right? There's something in
Some people would like that.
Stuff to see in Springfield or out to Pittsfield and see some of the great things
My kid said something about the Six Flags trip. Is that?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah. One thing, though, I'd ask, though, based on your history, when you depart from positions, I would ask that you just let us know if you're going to depart from this position because we do appreciate what you do.
Oh, thank you.
Well, we would know because then we would have to appoint somebody else to become the MBTA.
I'll stay along, yeah, as long as it's easy, as long as there's plenty of funding there. Yeah, then I'll, yeah. Well, thanks. So, yeah, again, anytime you have questions
Thanks for the update. Greatly appreciate it. If anyone has questions, you can continue to reach out.
And thanks. Thanks for all you do, guys. Yeah, thank you. All right.
Because that means none of us have to. That's okay. You're good. Great.
See you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. No, 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 that's, we, we understand.
Us too.
Okay. Okay. Well, moving on in our agenda, next is the update from our recent tri-board meeting. I'd like to hear people's input, what you thought. And I think this might be an opportunity to also let Michael know what we feel we want to see at the next meeting that's happening on April 5th. I think we took some notes on that. But I think, especially Makita knew, Claudia, you haven't sat in on one of these meetings bef, have you done a, have we done a tri-board meeting? Not, not, not since you've been on the select, yeah, no, yeah.
Might be.
But I'm sure you've sat through, so.
Might be helpful just to give folks an overview of, like,
Sure.
Before we start discussing.
Okay, sure. I'm willing to do that. So, for the public who's watching, to Makita's point, the tri-board is a meeting of the select board, the finance committee, and the school committee. We do it as part of our budget process. Not always. It depends on how the budget process is going. It's a way for us as the elected people who manage the majority of the budgets, as the select board, we manage the general government side. The school committee, they manage the, the, the school committee side, the school budget. And the finance committee, they manage and help with both. And it was an opportunity for Michael to give us an update on where we're at in the 2026 budget process, as well as for those of us who weren't able to attend some of the school committee budget processes to understand the challenges that our school committee is currently facing with some of their needs and increased requirements of some of the students they're having to educate. And I think it was a productive meeting. I think it was a good first step. I took some notes. So, who wants to jump in? I think that gives a good overview and thoughts, comments?
I just, if I may, Madam Chair, I was, I was impressed with Jim Superintendent Adams's presentation, especially when it came to special education and, and the, the needs of several students that fit those, those requirements and the changes. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing concrete. I mean, they have figures, but those figures are constantly changing with, with the needs of a student, or especially a new student that may move into town that has these, these needs. So, that's a, that's always a revolving door. So, you can never really put your finger on one figure, and that's constantly changing. And that's, you know, that, that's a difficult boat to, you know, to steer during, you know, a budget process. It's kind of difficult to gauge, you know, where you're going to be at a certain timeframe in, in a school calendar year, especially if you have kids that are coming in midstream where you already have a budget set. So, now you have to change that, those figures all around. So, it was very educational on my, on my part, anyway, I hope for everybody else with respect to, you know, how difficult it is and, and how important it is to make sure that the needs of all those students that, that require that special training and a special education is met, you know, forthwith without any, you know, delays. Because it's important. You educate one, you educate everyone and not, and not leave anybody behind.
Yep.
Mike's presentation on the town side, I thought was very up-to-date, Martin, with respect to, you know, the challenges that we face and what we meet. I knew some of the big challenges that Michael brought forward was new development, which is, you know, even though everybody thinks that, you know, all these things are coming up, you know, coming online, they're already accounted for to some respect in, in, in the budget. So, when you start looking at those figures that are coming in with revenue, those figures are a little bit lower than what we anticipated over the last three or four years. They were a lot higher. So, and then with the, I would say, the uncertainty of what's happening on the federal level with grants and other funding that many cities and towns and states look, you know, look for the need to use is now in question. And so, that's putting things on hold for a lot of, you know, not just Ashland, but for everyone with respect to that. So, these are definite challenges that, that this town is facing for me. And hopefully, there'll be some resolution with that. But I thought overall, the presentation was very detailed, but very concise. And, you know, it was understandable. And I know Mike's presentation is online. I know Mr. Adams's presentation is online on the school site. So, if there's any questions or concerns that people don't, you know, totally understand, just go on those sites and take a look at them. The figures are what they are. And they don't tell a nice tale, but it's, 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 they're accurate. It is what it is. And they're accurate, and we have to deal with it. And we'll deal with it the best way we can. And I hope everybody understands that if you want the services that you're currently getting and to continue that, well, it may be, it may cost a little bit more than what we anticipated. And it's just the way it is. There's nothing to do that, you know, the economy is, is in flux. Inflation is increasing. And God only knows where all these actions are going to lead to down the road that have just taken over in the last 60 days.
And, and unfortunately, we can't not balance our budget. We have to have a balanced budget when we go to town meeting. So, who'd like to go next? Thoughts? What you'd like to see us follow up with in April?
I'll, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead, Makita.
Again, I, I do want to say that, you know, on the town side, Michael's presentation. And school side, you know, school committee, Jim's presentation, very, very clear, easy to understand. And I'm glad that those are online. And I would encourage people to take a look at, at, at what, what was presented so that folks understand. Joe, I think you gave a pretty accurate recap, but I think the thing to understand, I think, on the school side and on, on the town side, but focusing on a school for a second, you know, I think that there are a lot of challenges, and not just exclusive to, to special education. But, you know, I think there's some, there's some challenges here insofar as some of the policy changes that you talked about coming down from the federal government. There's uncertainty at the top and at the bottom, or on all sides of this thing. And, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to realize that there are a number of factors and a number of uncertainties. And it's kind of hard to point at one thing to say that this is why this is happening. You know, oh, blame this, or this, that, or the other thing. I think that's, that's not where we want to have this conversation. I think the conversation, it goes back to exactly, you know, what, what Joe said. You know, I think folks are accustomed to a certain level of service in town. And we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions about priorities and, you know, what kinds of, what kind of level of service will be acceptable to folks here in town, on the town side, school side, et cetera, going forward. You know, we don't have a crystal ball, you know? I don't even have a Magic 8-Ball, I can't tell you. You know, those are fun. And people sadly do make a lot of management decisions with them. I'm convinced of that. But, but I'm, I'm not saying anything, you know, Michael. But, but despite that moment of levity, levity, which is greatly needed at this point, we are facing some very serious, serious challenges here. And I think that if, if we, you know, the boards and, and us as townspeople can approach it from, from that direction and try to, try to figure out um, and try to, try to figure out how we can, how we can, we can make decisions that have maximum benefit to us, uh, and, and being able to discuss these things rationally and, and, um, you know, and, and together and collectively. I think that's, uh, that's the point, that's the way forward. Um, so.
Thank you, Makita. Claudia?
Yeah, I just, um, you have a, a few comments and thank you, Joe. I thought that was a really good recap as well. Um, you know, I think one thing to think about is really even before what we're going through right now in recent, the recent 60 days with all the uncertainty and, and potential dramatic changes, um, that just even since, um, COVID really, uh, you know, the, the rate of inflation has been very dramatic. And, you know, we really haven't kept up with that in terms of how we pass it on to the community. And I, you know, at some point that comes and you get to the wall on those things, and I think that we are fast approaching that. You know, one of the, um, things that I think is significant is, is items that are in the budget that we end up not funding or whatever, but that are in the budget or in the budget request, I should say, over and over again, and we're not in the position, um, to fund them. That that's, those are, that's an important data point, I think. Um, and then, you know, finally, just in terms of the school budget, and Joe did a nice job at talking about, um, you, you know, I think certainly the, the part of the school budget that is the most challenging tends to be the special education portion. I think, you know, it's, it's hard sometimes to have conversations about that because I think that we all believe, um, that we want to support every ch- single child that comes through our school district and make sure that they get what they need. And, you know, some children need a lot more than other children, and I think a lot of us live in this world and, and we don't know, um, the severity sometimes of the needs of some of our students. And so, um, and, you know, we do the right thing by them and as we should. And, and I think the school department's done a tremendous job of building programs that have kept students in district. And, um, whenever possible and providing services to them in the district, um, they've done certainly a dramatic, um, job, I mean, a very, a very good job of that, of being able to service our kids and educate our kids in our district whenever possible, because that's where they should be. So I, I do think we have some difficult choices ahead. I think in April, um, I mean, that's what we're going to need to be looking at. Certainly, we're going to take recommendations from Jim and Michael and, um, and have to hash those out a little bit and, and understand what the impact is, and then understand about how do we, uh, do a better job of educating the public. That's, that's huge.
Great. Okay. Randy?
So, you know, I, I completely agree with, with, you know, with Makita and Joe and Claudia. We were, one of the things that is, um, interesting about Mr. Adams's presentation is just how much they are taking into account every single little thing that they can, whether it's positions that they can consolidate or it's, um, uh, changes in this, in, in the special education, um, amount, or transportation, which has become a big issue on the school side. Um, you know, I, I know we do that on the municipal side, but I, I was having a conversation with Jen kind of after, after we were leaving Mendez, um, Saturday, and it was a really interesting, it, what she said really kind of struck me was, you know, Jim's presentation is like a unit because the schools are pretty much contained. It's a one, one-issue bucket. What our challenge is on the municipal side is we cover so many other really important areas of, of operations. So, and it kind of all gets lumped together into this one, like, thing. And so, you know, to, to the point of education, we, I think we need to do a better job of like, and Jen and I were kind of talking about this a little bit too, and it kind of goes into the communication plan too. Like, so how do we break it down so people understand what the services are that we're, that we're giving people? Like, what, you know, what it means for our fire department and police department, what, how many calls they take? How many, what, what percentage of time, uh, Chief Roby was saying at the budget session, at the, at Michael's budget session, that there are times where there's, we, we send calls out on, um, a mutual aid and we're not able to completely service our community. How often does that happen? What happens if that, like, so if we were to cut, and this is kind of the same thing, like, because I want to know, you know, our, our dilemma is going to be how do we close that gap? How do we close that, the gap in what is going to be our, the revenue that we, that we need? And what the revenue actually, the levy, where, where we are, and, and the, the issue is.
Versus the requests that have been put forward.
Yes. And it's not even just the requests. Like, I, I, I think it's like the level of service that we provide. It's not even, it's not even funding, we're, we're not even talking about like, this is not the gold-plated service standard that we would love to, to aspire to. This is like, how do we service the community that we have? Because, and, and, and minus, minus the requests even, because, you know, we, we know that the insurance, the, the money for insurance is going, the, the cost of insurance is going up, and that, that in and of itself takes up a good chunk of, of the increase in the levy. You know, so there's so little wiggle room for us to even make any of these changes. Uh, so how do we make up that gap? And, and we have two choices, really. We either can figure out how to use one-time revenue, uh, one-time funds, or we cut service. And so, you know, I think for me personally, when we, when we meet in April, I really want to see what that cut in service would look like, like, like specifics. And not just on the municipal side, on the, on the, on the, on the school side too, because does that mean that class sizes go from 24 to 28 or 30 for, for an elementary school age? Does that mean less electives in the high school? Does that mean less opportunity for our kids? Does that mean increased fees on busing or sports? Or do our trash, does, do we have to really look at like, how do we subsidize other things on the municipal side? Like, it, it's, it's going to be a challenge, and, and I hate fees as much as everybody else does. I hate the idea of paying more in taxes. I also know that, that we do have a really, um, our community, our compu- our community knows they can depend on us as, as a government to service their needs, and I also don't, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about cutting services because I'm concerned what that would mean for our residents. Um, so it's, it's, but part of that is like this education component. How do we educate people on what, what is really going on behind the scenes? Because people take a lot of stuff for granted, a lot of stuff for granted. Whether it's that they can go to the library during certain hours, whether it's that, that, um, there's a food pantry in town that is town, that, that, that is town-run.
Yeah.
Um, whether that there is, um, you know, police and fire and a water treatment plant here in town. Like, there's a lot of stuff that people just really don't, don't, don't know. So that's, that's my, that's my take on it. So that's, sorry.
Claudia, it looks like you had a response or a question or a comment.
Um, I, I think I lost it, but I did, I did have one at one point. It's okay.
It's okay. Okay. Okay.
But yeah, I mean, I, I, I do want to say that, you know, part of what you're, I, I, I think you got, uh, the specifics down, Brandy, of what, what I think I was trying to say. Like, it's really critical that people understand when we're just like, oh, we have to make some hard decisions, oh, we need to look at services. Specifically helping people to understand, like, what services are we talking about? And what could be the potential impacts of that? You know, I, I think people appreciate, they do appreciate what government does in this town. I think they do. They may not understand what it takes to provide the level of service that we do. And even now, you know, I, I'm sure, and my colleagues probably hear, like, you know, there's some fantastic things that we're doing in town, but people need and want more. You know, so now we're, we're here and we're talking about potentially less. But to your point, we have to give real concrete examples of these impacts, and I think that's exactly what we need to see at the April, uh, in April. Um, so that we can better, to your point, communicate what some of these hard choices might be.
And, and, and before I let you, unless, okay. So, one of the things that I think about is having sat through this in very different ways, right? Since here on the school, since here as a select board member, being a school committee member, and the discussion and the, the idea of level services, right? So we look at what we're providing this year, and what would it cost us to provide exactly what we're doing now in the next fiscal year, right? I remember those discussions, okay, we're going to, we're going to look at level services and what does that cost? And there were times when we had to say, okay, well, we know we're not going to be able to provide level services, so we need to reduce our costs by X percent for whatever reason. And we had those, we would look at that, okay, if we, if we cut by 10%, what would that mean? And I remember having a conversation with Michael about this. He said, well, remember that if you decide to remove a position, and I remember many years ago having this discussion as a school committee member with Claudia, if you decide to remove a position, you don't completely save those funds because you might have to then play unemployment or things like that, right? And as Jim was talking about with us, they have teachers that retire at a higher end. And it used to be, we would, we knew we could bring someone in at a lower rate to, as a brand-new teacher or a year, a teacher who'd only been a couple of years in their, in a position. But with some of the programs that we have in place, thinking about languages at the schools, they haven't been able to do that. I mean, we had some teachers who had been in positions for 25, 30 years. When they retired, I mean, I remember one in particular, they couldn't find someone to replace them, so they had to bring them back as a substitute. Yeah. So, I, I think the, the big thing for the community that I would like to say is we're having these discussions, but we need the input from the community. We need you to take a look at those budgets. We need you to say, okay, I like everything that's happening at the library. To be able to continue to do that, we might need to hire some people. What does that look like? I mean, I looked at the local pages today. There were three pages of activities going on at our library. Now, a lot of them are virtual, but someone still has to manage them, and currently they're all free. And, and, and it's funny, I, I was chatting about that, and it's like, okay, well, they're not really free. They're free to the participants, but our tax dollars are covering those events.
And the friends pay for, the, the friends are paying for those events as well.
So it's not, they're not free. There's no cost to the participants, but they are being paid for either by don- you know, the friends donations or from the library budget. Is that something we want to continue, right? You were talking about the, the things that are going on in our community center. Our senior s- community center, there's more stuff going on there than has been for a long time, right? Our food pantry has expanded. Part of it's because there's been more need from our community. I think about our holiday programs at Thanksgiving and at Christmas. Now, granted, a lot of those are managed, or not managed, but there are donations made to help support that, but there's somebody managing that. There's a position in the budget that has helped managing that. So I think it's important that we get input from our community. What, what services are you using that you, that are critical to you, and I think we need to get put input on that. Go ahead, Makita.
I, I was going to actually ask about that too, because, you know, I think leading up to our discussion in April, it would be helpful to get that input because I think the next step on that is sort of like doing some, and I'm not talking about any kind of complex econometric modeling, but doing some like back-of-the-napkin modeling about like, with a few scenarios, likely scenarios. Like, if we decide to take this course of action to take the Jenga pieces out of here, here, what does that look like? What does it mean? I know we can't run, we can't do like a, all scenarios.
We can't do all scenarios, but we can pick a couple.
But maybe a couple of like possibly likely ones or, or ones that, that would, would, would be likely to be considered based on feedback from the community and some of the things that, that we're seeing as well. You know, nothing extensive, like maybe two or three, I don't know. But that might actually help not just, uh, us understand impacts, but will help communicate impact. Just a thought.
Okay.
Um, just one other thing, just, um, just to keep in mind too, is that our town has, the, the demographics have changed in our town too.
Oh, definitely.
And the needs have changed in our town. And so, you know, it's, it's, you know, I think, you know, for instance, I know that our, um, like, our police department is doing a lot more with mental health. Like, there's a lot more mental health component. There's a lot of social work that's happening both in the police and at the community center. And those are needs that are, from what I gather, growing in our community.
It's essential.
Mm-hmm. And so.
And in society.
Right.
And in society. So, so, you know, we talk about the food pantry and, you know, that's, that's part of it too. It's like, how, how do we meet the needs of the, the residents as they are now? And so, it's not necessarily about like just cutting programming in one spot. It's, it's really, I, I mean, I think we really do need to, to kind of make sure that, um, that, you know, because even, you know, Jen had made this point the other day, and even if, you know, those needs are not going to go away. So if we don't service those people, it's just going to shift it to another place. Whether people come to town hall, whether it's people are showing up at the library because they have no place to go, and the library is a great place for that, but like, they're not getting services at the library. So, it's, it's, it's that kind of a thing.
That's such an excellent point. Just because, and, and I think, I'm going to say it louder for the people in the back, just because you cut the budget line, it doesn't make the problem go away.
Right. If anything, it just displaces them.
It, it, it may displace it or exacerbate it. So that's, that's, I mean, that was wonderfully put, Brandy, and I think that's something all of us as a community have to keep in mind as we go into this process.
And, and if I, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Um, with respect to how the, how the budget is, is designed, um, Michael and his management team, financial team over the years have, uh, taken a, a serious conservative approach to the, to the budget. And, um, it only goes to show, uh, as a result of our AAA rating. And, um, it's not like we're spending money haphazardly, far from it. If anything, we have a very good, um, eye on, on, on the, on the ball as to what's going on and where the money is being spent and how it's being spent. Um, we're just very cautious about where the monies are coming from. And this year, even more so, uh, with the way the state is, you know, making their decisions as to the type of revenues we'll see on our cherry sheets and what's going to happen, uh, with the federal funding, uh, if we see any at all. Uh, that's definitely going to come into play, and I, and I think people need to realize that, okay, there are serious, going to be some serious hard decisions that need to be made, and to Brandy's point, what services do you want? You want level services? Well, okay, it's going to cost us a little more. We have monies that are available, there are those one-time fees, the one-time fundings that we have. We call it the rainy day funding that we have that's available. Well, if it's, if anything, it's foreign buckets out there pretty soon, so we, we need to make sure that we throw, we do everything we have to to make sure this budget is balanced, as, as Yolanda stated earlier. And we make sure that it goes to the, the services that everyone is, is looking forward to. And, and is a, they're accustomed to, and it, it doesn't come without a price, unfortunately.
Okay.
We need, just need to do that.
Just a, just a couple of points, um, you know, in, in terms of how to maybe engage the community a little bit. I mean, I think one thing might be maybe in Michael's newsletter to maybe some kind of a survey that just, uh, asks, gives a list of services? And. And asks people to maybe to check all that they use.
Yeah, be a good idea.
You know, something along those lines. And then the other thing that to me is very different this year, and Joe, you just touched upon this. That causes me great concern is that, you know, I feel like in, in days when I've been involved in pretty heavy budget discussions. You kind of, you kind of had an idea of the direction and everything was going. But I feel these days are so, the uncertainty around what we are currently doing as a country. And the impact of things like tariffs. And, you know, everything I hear is expected, the average family to have an additional $2,000 next year to pay for. Some of these, the, as a result of some of these tariffs. If, if, and, and I just think some of the, some of the things that are going on. It's even very challenging to try to even predict what's going on. So now we're trying to make some decisions when we really don't know what the future looks like. And when we think about using one-time funds and you, you know, you're always gambling when you're using one-time funds. Because if that money doesn't come back, then, then you've got to make it up. And I can remember being on the school committee and laying off a, a teacher mid-year because we lost some funding. And so, you know, these are, it, it's, it's tough. Because I feel like there's additional layer this year because we don't really know what the future.
I would agree with you on that. I definitely think that because of what's going on at the federal level. I mean, I, I've never heard questions about Title I monies coming through. Like we did with, with on Saturday.
Yeah, that was.
And I think Jim bringing up the point about their revolving accounts and how much they're using, but not knowing what's coming in. I think that's important to just think about that. So a couple of things, and then Michael has some comments. I know we heard from someone on the school committee and finance committee wanting to look at the general government revolving funds. So I think we want to see that stabilization fund balances. I think that would be good to know, you know, what is our rainy day fund balance at? And I think, the other thing that I think is gonna be important, because there's a lot of new people sitting there, is also just review our current financial policies. And you and I talked about this. So we have some specific financial policies about where the burden lies if we get additional funding. But also where the burden lies if our funding gets cut. So it's, I think everyone that's sitting there at, at the meeting, I think it's important. Maybe we get it out to them beforehand, but can have a discussion. One of the things we talked about was possibly changing and looking at the special ed stabilization fund, right? As, as Paul Kendall said, it currently has a, a cap that we thought was gonna be enough. But seeing what we're seeing now in those special education out of district costs. And, you know, not being able to meet those, we might need to increase that. So that's something that we need to look at. One positive or something that is being discussed at the state level is they are looking at trying to increase Chapter 70. To hold certain communities harmless from some of the changes and trying to increase that. There's also been discussion that they want to fully fund Circuit Breaker and they're trying to make that part of the budget. Unfortunately, I still think the whole Circuit Breaker calculation is a joke. Because you still need to, as a community, support up to $40,000 of the char, the costs for that. So I don't think that'll change this year. But I think one thing I've heard through different organizations that I'm a part of is there's gotta be discussion about two and a half. Right? And the fact that we can only raise taxes two and a half percent, what does that mean? How does that impact excluded debt? There's also been discussion about the whole building schools, building public buildings. How, how can that be looked at as a state to support? I mean, we as a community have just built a school, we've just built a public safety building. So any changes, we're not gonna really benefit from in the near future. But how can that be looked at? Okay. Michael, you had some comments.
I'll try, I'll try to keep it in the interest of time. But I, I got a feeling if I don't say anything, you guys will be disappointed, so I don't want that to happen. So I think just add a few points and I'll try to make them quickly. Just really to kind of go back to the special education discussion, because I think you all made some good points. And I think, you know, what I heard on Saturday, and, and Jim and I talk about this constantly. Is, you know, with special education, the, the, the problem, if you will, is not necessarily that we have to spend the money. It's, it's that we, it's, it's very hard for us to plan. Because you could have a kid, you know, come in in the middle of the semester that you hadn't necessarily planned for. And so that's really kind of where, where the challenge is. It's not the kid itself, right? It's, 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 it's the timing and the unknown. That's really kind of where, where the challenges are related to that.
That should almost be state funding, you know.
Oh.
They're much more significant.
Something, something, something I've always said about Circuit Breaker and special education costs. And I've, I've mentioned this to a few people. I'd like to say, okay, what are our special education costs in our community? Right? And, and I don't know offhand what they are. But what if as a state, instead of doing the full, you know, the crazy Chapter 70 funding where you get this percentage or that percentage? Every community goes, here are our special education costs and just fund those. Because it's very possible that if they fully funded our special education costs. We'd probably be okay, or closer to okay. Right? Rather than this convoluted formula of this and that and so many kids. And then it doesn't matter what level your community is at. There's this, there, there's these mandates of special education that you have to do to do stuff in, in. And, and it would still incentivize communities to try and keep their costs low, like we've done, to keep our programs in house. But it would also maybe then say to the state, okay, some of these programs that get to increase their fees by 18% that no one is controlling. Maybe the state would look at that.
Well, and the other thing that's a big issue with special education right now, and it was, you know, is that, yeah, transportation. But the other thing is, part of the reason that's, they can't, we can't even get kids placed at times.
Right.
Yeah.
Right? And that, that had never happened until probably four years ago, maybe. Where you would struggle to find a placement for a child who really needed some extra support.
They did, they brought that up Saturday.
So, I mean, that's, uh.
Another good point. So, so just a couple of other things. I think, you know, some of the analysis that you're asking for can certainly be done. I, it can't be done by April 5th though. And that brings me to, I think, a bigger point. I think we're, we're literally two months out from town meeting.
Right.
I do think, we haven't even had like a FinCom, like our, our hearings with FinCom. And I think, you know, some of the, the challenges that we're having with the finance department kind of, you know, makes things a little bit complicated. I will say, most of the discussions that we're having, it sounds like given where we are in the FY '26 budget cycle is probably more suited to the FY '27 budget cycle. I think this year, given what we've got, I think we're gonna have to make a plan basically to do, to use the one-time funds. I'm gonna come up with a scenario and I'm gonna ask the department head, like if you needed to cut by 10%, like what would that, what would that look like? So I've gotta kind of like have some baseline.
Okay.
So that's one point I wanted to make. Honestly, at the end of the day, if you can think of this thing as a quadrant, you know, four boxes. And one being, you know, one axis being, you know, whether something is easy and hard. And then the other being whether it's simple or complex. This is a very simple problem that is very hard. It's a hard thing to solve, okay? You just don't have enough revenue coming in to cover the expenses.
Right?
That's the bottom line.
And, and the thing is, if, you know, and, and I don't usually, you know, like to do this, but if, and we hear this from people, right? Okay, if it's my personal budget, if I don't have enough revenue to cover what I want to spend, I have to cut my spending.
Or you find ways to get more.
Right, or you find ways to increase your revenue, one of the two, right? Either you say, okay, this is what I'm making, so this is what I'm gonna spend. Or you say, okay, this is what I want to spend, I need to make extra.
Yeah.
Right? So we need to, and, and, and I expect for this year, it's gonna be a balance of the two. I think we're gonna have to look at saying, okay, maybe there's, there's a request to add somebody new someplace. We say, okay, we're not gonna do that, but we're gonna make sure everything else stays the same in your department. I think finding that balance, I think if we have a good understanding of where our funds are at, right? Our rainy day fund, our goal is 10%.
We can do, obviously do all that.
I think we're above that, right? Aren't we?
No, we stay right at 10.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
But that tells me that if we use some of that, right? If we, and, and, and the thing that always gets me, not gets me, but we need to understand is, we put it in the budget, right? So we budget X amount. But the last couple of years, we've had a fair amount of free cash.
Actually, every year we've been here, I, I think.
We've had almost 2 million in free cash.
Yeah, we've tried.
It's not free and it's not cash, but.
Yeah, we try to keep it at the DOR.
This does warrant some, some explanation, Madam Chair.
It does, and actually, Yolanda and I did a great video that explains this.
Yes.
There you go. People can take a look at it.
But I do think, yeah, that's.
So, and, and I, and that's the part that I always want to, I, I go back to, right? Is we, we're, we're saying we have this gap between our revenue and our potential expenses. And then, I mean, we won't, we don't know yet for 2025. But in '24, we had some additional revenue and because of our potential expenses. But then we had that, and, and basically it's, we performed below budget in regards to our expenses, right? That's what free cash is. You budget X.
Or the revenue came in.
Or the revenue came in higher, right? Either you said, okay, you didn't spend as much and your revenue increased. And that's where that free cash comes from. So I think those are all things to look at as we move forward. And I think we as a board, as well as with school committee and finance, have to determine how much of that rev, how much of that cash that's sitting there in our rainy day funds and other funds, are we willing to use? Or are we willing to apply to our budget in case we need it in fiscal year '26?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come up with, with something for, you know, the, the board to consider and contemplate. One, one thing I do want to point out, and I, I think I did make this point in Saturday, is that I know we talk about the things that we've added, right? But I think it's really important to note, if you start from way further behind than other people and you add.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I think that needs to be. Well, exactly. So let's just say, so we have three people at the senior center, right? Let's just say we have those, we'll go with them, like three people at the senior center. And maybe 10 years ago, we only had one, right? But if 10 years ago, you know, another community had five, right? And they're at like seven. And that's what, and that's the services that they can, you know, they're able to provide those services. I, I think, I think we need to kind of keep that in mind.
One way to highlight that is to show recurring requests for certain things, right?
Right.
That it means it's been, we are behind because we didn't, we haven't funded it when we needed to.
The problem, I think, I think where, where we're going to kind of shoot ourselves in the foot on this is that we have found ways to do very similar things with a lot less people.
Well, that's.
We don't want to be victims of our success.
That's, that, that's something that, that, to your point, Michael, right? Is we're, as a town, most people would go, my services are being met, right? My kids are getting educated at the schools.
But they don't understand the impact that it has on the people who are actually having to do, to do this.
Which can impact quality of delivery, delivery, you know, so.
Long-term, definitely.
And long-term, it will impact quality. So, you know, you talk about schools, you talk about this, you talk about that. Like, you know, um, you know, there's no free lunch, you know? No something for nothing, you know? There's always a cost.
I think two things related to data, I'll make that point, and then one last point. We met yesterday, just some of the staff to go over some of the data requested on Saturday that we talked about and some of the other things that we can add. And I think we could add a lot more color and, and context to the data that we presented just by adding some other pieces. Like for example, when you look at inflation and you look at constant dollars on our tax levy. Well, how much has eggs gone up the whole, you know? What does that look like for people too? And then finally, Claudia, I think you had mentioned something about, it'd be, oh, it'd be great if, maybe it was you, Makita, something about a survey.
It's Claudia's survey. Yeah, I, I like that idea, adding it to your newsletter.
So, so we, we did do a question a couple newsletter episodes ago, like how do people feel about the direction of the town? And again, these aren't scientific.
Right.
But overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, over 80% was positive. So that was really good.
But to Claudia's point, and I think that's a great idea, is what services do you use? Do you go to the library? Do you go to the senior center?
And we need that for the analysis piece and the communication piece.
It's gonna be interesting though, because like if you have like the fire department, like you're not calling the fire department, you're not gonna use the fire department unless you need them. And so you don't, might not necessarily need them, and you might not have necessarily used them.
Right. So maybe there's two questions. Maybe there's a question, which services do you use? And then there's a second question that says, that asks for the value you place on questions or services.
It might be two different weeks' questions, right? Or, or what?
Could be, yeah.
Or maybe it's, what services have you used in the last 12 months? Right? Because if you've had an emergency in the last 12 months, you might have used the fire department, right?
So if you don't might, like, I mean, we can come up with a couple of options. And I'd love to bounce it off of you and to.
I would actually say also that there are like, very likely that other municipalities have put out similar surveys. There's really no reason to reinvent the wheel, we could probably steal, I mean, borrow. I mean, replicate instruments from. Share, yes, that's what I'm looking for. Other municipalities and tailor to our, our needs. Say that right.
And the final point is, I, I feel like there's two categories of data that we, we always, we always talk about. We don't talk about them in categories, but I think they're both important. So we talk about the fact that we need to know what people value. And also what people, what kind of community they want to be, what kind of services do they want to have? Okay, so we get that. The next question's gonna be, if, if, just speaking as, you know, taxpayer is like, well then, how do I know you can't do that with your existing resources?
Right.
And so that's where that value piece comes in, that I'm always harping on, right? So, so I think we just gotta think of both, both data points and, and have answers for it all.
You know, a lot, a lot of people in town probably don't realize that the Ashland Public Library almost lost its certification.
Oh, yeah.
Because of, you know, the lack of, you know, funding.
Yeah, the lack of resources that it had.
And it was, it was a very dark time. And, you know, people were very outspoken as to what they wanted.
Joe, I'm sure there are people in our community who did not realize that there were two, three years where we had no librarians in our schools.
Right.
I bet you half the community now doesn't, wasn't here when the library was on.
Correct.
Right.
Well, that's my point. That's my point, we have a lot of new people, that's it.
If you look at the history.
Claudia made the point that, you know, I think it might have been Brandy. You know, the demographics in this town have changed dramatically. You know, we have a lot of new families in town.
Well, and we also have a different income bracket, right?
Absolutely. AMI has gone up too.
Right, but, but also, I remember a couple of years ago, before everyone was getting free lunch, free and reduced lunch. I remember hearing from Mr. Adams that the number of students that were on free and reduced lunch had increased.
Right. Yep.
Who would think that?
Who would, who would, right, at this stage of the game, who would think that?
Here in our, in this community.
And in years past, you know, a lot of the condo groups didn't have a lot of children, or families in there. Now these families are staying in these units. And the associations are seeing that and it's impacting, you know, their, their quality of life now with respect to that. And, you know, they're worried about the safety and everything that's going on within, you know, within the individual, you know, associations. So, yeah, there, there's a big change. And one of the things, Michael, you brought up a couple of years back. And, and the reason why I think of it right now is that I just opened up my mail and I got my excise tax bill. And.
I'm the person you think of when you open your mail.
No, but, no, my point was that you, we got more excise tax than we anticipated.
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, who's to say that can't happen again this year?
Well, we factored the higher number into this.
Okay, so hopefully it comes in, right?
Maybe people are gonna go out and buy new cars before they go up in price.
In tariffs, before the tax.
You never know.
So we won't see that this year, but next year, right? Which is one of the reasons we saw increased excise, right? Because when interest rates were low and people were buying, yeah, yeah, okay. So, great discussion. And again, to the community, reach out, read Michael's newsletter. So, great discussion, and again, to the community, reach out, read Michael's newsletter, reach out to any of us to say, wh- what do you value? What are you concerned about? What do you want to see? Because it's important that we have your feedback. So I think, Michael, you have a, enough information. If you think of anything else, make sure you, you know, let Michael know if you want to other data or whatever, or something like that, so. Great, well, thank you for that discussion, everybody. Uh, moving on regarding discussion, communication plan and response from, for select board. So the actual communication plan was not included in our packet that it was supposed to be, so we're going to push that part out to our next meeting, but.
Which is not bad, because actually we got a meeting on Friday with somebody that I think might make a difference on that.
Okay, um, but there's been some different comments. So I just want each of you to think about, if you have a few minutes now, what are, what are you seeing, so that as they talk about that community, that plan on Friday? What are you seeing or feeling is missing from either what's going out, or what's on our website, or how we are interacting with communication to the community? Now, I mean, we, we don't have the, that, that plan, but just, you know, let's get that feedback and we can give it to Michael and then we can go from there.
Well, I know a couple of things that, that, you know, I have, I know that I expressed concern about. One was when we get an email.
Right.
Who's responding? What are they saying? And, you know, I just, it's, it's hard to, um, get an email and not respond, especially, you know, that was something I always have taken pride in, is being responsive, okay? So it feels like we, we've addressed that.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is the website is very challenging to use.
And that was improved a couple of years ago.
Well, ten.
Has it been? No, because it's been since Brandy's, it was like Brandy's second or third year on the board that it got, was it, you said, yeah? Yeah.
Twenty-one.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a, a, like.
A complete refresh.
And, and part of the issue is, is making sure that the, the content is easily accessible and.
And kept up to date.
And, you know, utilizing the homepage and things like that.
Yeah, and, and I think too, like the search function.
Functionality.
Doesn't, I don't know, doesn't seem to work really, really well. And I'm not, that would be a sort of a standard Google thing, so I'm, on some level, I'm a little surprised about that, but, um, there, it, there's something there. And then I think it would be pretty simple to, to have like a, I mean, you know, on the backend, it's basically a spreadsheet, and after there's any meeting, there's a link pasted there for, um, for the meeting. So you could go in and easily find if you wanted to review a meeting.
You mean the video of it?
Yeah, the video of it. I mean, I think that.
Do we have any videos on the, of meetings on the website? Do we bring them over? Right, yeah.
Oh, planning guys, you're right.
Yeah.
And I, I think that.
I think, I like that idea.
You know, the other thing maybe to think about too is, do we offer a transcript, right? Who was it? Was it you, Joe? Somebody said to me today that they hadn't watched something, but they'd read the transcript. People do that now.
Oh, I, I said that about the speech last night, so.
Yeah, yeah, we do. I mean, I, I, I see that all the time, that if, if I don't want to listen to something, a podcast, I can get the transcript.
Read the transcript, yeah.
You know, that's a good option. Is that some, you know, that might be a little bit further down the road, but is that something that we want to offer?
Transcript of a meeting.
Yeah.
From a usability standpoint.
And not the minutes necessarily, but an actual word-for-word transcript.
Yeah, so that you just, you know, read through.
And with AI right now, it's, it's getting a lot easier to do.
Entirely possible, and it's happening, it's happening.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's how these other organizations are doing it. Yeah, yeah, it gives you the bullet points, things you want to work on, I mean.
Yep.
It's very cool.
Okay, what else, so what else were your points, Claudia?
Um, I think, you know, those were the highlights. I mean, I think the, the website's the biggest deal.
Yep, okay.
Um, and also.
Makita?
Yeah, I think, um, just a couple of things. I, I'd like to see out of the communication plan, like a little, um, um, I could, I could talk about one tactical thing, um, definitely some more expansion and some ideas around utilizing social media, uh, talking, not being more, looking at like, um, everything from like, being more responsive, or how we can be responsive to inquiries over social media, how we can make sure that we are getting correct information to folks over social media, uh, addressing misinformation and disinformation. And kind of, you know, of course, with social media, also reach, you know, I see that we've got a TikTok, I guess now, but, um, for how long that lasts legally, but, uh, but, um, but, um, but really sort of taking kind of a strategic look about not just how, but how, how, when and why we are pushing to, pushing and responding to information across all channels. The, the, the only other thing I'd like to add is that I think, um, there should be some kind of a public component for communicating with select board, not necessarily emailing us individually, but like even an opportunity in some of our kind of our mass communications, like, you know, ask select board this, or, you know, something like that. And so like the board can, can field, I, I would say FAQs, but like lots of questions, like we, we, we'll probably get over the next, you know, because we're going to budget, like a lot of the same kinds of questions coming up. Like it would be great if we could just.
Like ask the select board and then one of us takes those and responds?
Exactly, you know, on, on issues that, like, from a policy standpoint, that we are in concurrents with, you know, just so we can, you know, kind of be responsive that way and a, a more public-facing, uh, way as well, just to let folks know.
So, just not to, one of the things we have to be careful of is someone sends a, a, a question, right? Similar now with email, right? Someone sends something in, as the chair, I respond how I feel is appropriate, and I do it pretty generically, because I know, um, and that would be a similar thing if we do, you know, do an ask the select board member, right? How do you, how do you make sure that either one, if, if we just, you know, maybe we have to discuss it and then someone can post something?
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
Something we look at.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe that's how we do it.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so just as a suggestion, maybe when we're looking at kind of redoing the website, we could have a section on the select board site that's like an ask the select board corner?
Right, yeah.
And what they could, what people could do is they could send like questions to, you know, Susan, or me, or Jen, or Diane, and we can get it to you guys and get your answers on it, and then like kind of distill it into one answer, if that makes sense, and post it up there, does that make sense?
Newsletter.
That's a great idea, Claudia, because that's more responsive. Select board, yeah, like, you know, town newsletter, the select board corner.
Send the select board a, a question and.
Yeah, ask the select board a feature in the town newsletter, I love that.
Select board corner, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, but, um, but yeah, just kind of more, kind of, uh, also just sort of a strategic look at, at how we're, how we're managing communications, what we're communicating, when, why, all these sort of things across all of these channels. That's what I'd like to see.
How, and or Brandy comments?
So I would agree with Claudia about the website. I think that posting our links to meetings is a, like recordings is a really, would be, would be good, and I think that should be for all boards, actually, because my issue always is, is if I'm going, if I, like, if I'm looking for, if I hear about something that happened at the planning board, planning board is usually pretty good about things, meetings, that they, they post a lot of stuff on their website. So they're probably not the best, the best one. But say, when I went back to look at the first, um, ZBA meeting on ten to sixty Main Street, I couldn't find the recording, and it's, it's like then I'm going on WACA and I'm trying to find it, and it's literally, it's the most brutal, it actually really is the most brutal process, because.
I actually have a suggestion for that, but go ahead, keep going.
But to find the right town, the right meeting, and the right format, and the right date, like you're really, you just, you cross your fingers and you hope for the best. So it would be great to have like, to have recordings of all of our, all meetings posted up on the website. Um, and then the other thing too is, is I would love to have some sort of bulletin board feature on our website, where like, where groups, if they have vacancies, if they have, if they're looking for people, like there's some way to get that out there on our website, um, because I think that would be helpful too, when we have, when we have, volunteer positions we're looking to, to fill, or even like the farmer's market is looking for people, like, there has to be some sort of process, obviously, they can't just post willy-nilly, because then we get in trouble. But, um, I would love to see some sort of interactivity of the main, the main homepage on the website. And then, um, social media, like I'm, I'm curious what our, kind of how we, what our philosophy is, how organizations reach out to us as a town to be posted on, on like Instagram and Facebook and things like that, like what's that process look like?
We really do need that social media presence, like Instagram and that, and I think we, just because that's the way people get their information.
And just to make sure, and just to make sure people, like, if, if people need to get information out about something, that they know what the process looks like to how, to how the town can help support that, if it's something that is kind of more town-related.
Yeah, some, a clear process that people can follow and we can communicate, makes a lot of sense.
Maybe to help move that along, we could even, you know, Michael could send out, in when he communicates with, um, with staff, right? Just have a little blurb at the bottom, is there anything that you would like to push out, right? You'd do that?
Yeah.
Every Monday we talk about that.
I was going to say, we do that every Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it goes to the communications email, and so sometimes they're pushing monthly, information, and sometimes something new will come up during the week.
Yeah, yeah, it stays pretty active, that, that channel, yeah.
So, so one of the things I would like you to look at is WACA does a great job, right? But if you go to WACA on their YouTube station, it's very hard to find stuff. Right? So, why doesn't Ashland, Town of Ashland, have a YouTube page? So instead of storing everything on our website, which then could block, you know, bog down the website or make it difficult, if we had a Ashland town, you know, Town of Ashland YouTube page, and when you go there, you can hit select board, and it has select board meetings, and it has, I mean, it's, it would take some time and someone would have to manage that, but once it's set up, we can just say to WACA, okay, here's our, rather than just leaving it on the WACA YouTube channel, it comes to the Town of Ashland YouTube channel, and it's select board, and any board that has recorded meetings, and maybe we could work with WACA to bring some of the history, so that people could access it, and it would be on the, on the website, instead of having to have all of these things, you can say, go to the Town of Ashland YouTube page to see all these meetings.
But then you still have to have it organized somehow, that's why.
You still have to have it organized.
You don't have to do any of that. All we need to do is get a link to a record, every recording, is get the link from WACA.
Right.
And then, I mean, I, then you, basically, you design a, you know, the web page using a spreadsheet or whatever, and all it shows is, okay, these are the select board meetings, these are the planning board meetings.
We're saying similar things, it's just.
It depends, like which approach is going to be the easiest to implement? I think that's, that's the question. I think we're, we're both singing the same song, we just need to figure out what key it's in, so.
Right.
You know, I think if we do a little analysis on that and figure that out, then.
Do a little research, where does it make more sense?
Exactly, and then go with that.
Do we have a communications officer?
We have, we have a communications, like, person, and, and then.
So why, why couldn't we utilize those individuals?
Well, that's, so they're, we are, and they're going to come before us with, with their communications plan.
Okay.
So now remember, you know, Beth was brought on as the economic development director, right? And then as things changed, and then we brought on someone to work with her to do some communications, that has now changed, Beth is going to be doing more communication, and, um, Jordan is going to do more events. So I think, so I think this, these comments and suggestions can go to their, they're having a meeting on Friday, can go into that, and hopefully we can hear when, when they give us a communication plan.
I was just going to say, if, if that's what we already have available, then that's what we should be utilizing.
But, but they're doing more than just communications, right?
No, 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 I understand that.
There's, like, you know, the city of Framingham has a communications person.
Yep.
And they manage all the communication going out from the community.
Okay.
So.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so have we given you enough stuff to think about?
Resources.
I was going to say, you got a lot going on for Friday.
You know, again, doesn't have, if it doesn't make sense, but it's good to have the discussion.
I think we can accomplish a lot of what you're talking about.
Yeah, perfect.
And we might, we might get to it a different, a different way, slightly different way, but I think we can get to it.
Great, okay. Anything else on that? Are we good? Okay, wonderful, moving forward. Update on the dog park and the bid results, Jen, please.
So we had a bid opening, um, now it's probably been about a week, um, so it was one of our larger sort of responses, we received twenty-two bids, um, which was an awful lot, um, and it ranged from the low bid being four hundred and seven thousand nine hundred to one point one two million. So pretty wide range, uh, many of the folks sort of fell in that five fifty sort of range, there was probably about ten, uh, bidders. Uh, we've checked references on the low bid and, and got some good response. Um, we are a little concerned in terms of how tight, um, the budget is, so right now we have two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, from CPA, funds that were awarded, I guess, two, no?
All of twenty-three, yep.
Um, and then also, you, you know, we are hoping to receive the Stanton grant of two hundred and fifty thousand, um, a, as soon as we sort of move through this process, and so that gives us four hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, for the project. So I'm trying to carry a decent contingency, because we know when we did memorial drive, we did hit some ledges, and there is some site work. And also, in case we have to build, there's a boulder wall in the back that sort of separates the sort of more manicured part with the rock and, and the more natural piece. Um, and so we did get unit costs for both ledge and rock, carrying a decent contingency. And then the other thing we did, uh, on the recommendation of our designer was, I, we pulled out all the furnishings, you know, the shade structure, the benches, um, the water bubbler, the trash receptacles, because we can get a discount with, we direct buy off a state contract, we could potentially save around ten percent, we knew the budget would be pretty tight. And so I have estimates for those around somewhere between forty thousand, probably forty, fifty thousand, all said and done. Um, and then we would have to coordinate, um, with our contractor, so they would actually install it, we're just sort of supplying it, um, and saving the funds, so a little bit more front-end work on the procurement piece, but hopefully it will, uh, yield a decent savings. So I met with the dog park committee yes, last night, um, sort of just talking about, you know, how we want to approach it, given how tight, we're thinking the project will actually come in probably around five hundred and, I think, twenty?
Five.
Yeah, five twenty-five is what we're sort of, a little bit of contingency in case. Um, and so there has been some discussion with CPC, they were, um, meeting after, um, and so we're going to do a little bit of work around that, and maybe, maybe requesting additional funds for May. Sixty.
Sixty.
And so I have to work with Stanton Grant, like all of it has to sort of line up, we have a little bit of work to do on our end, but we'll have an update, um, you know, as We have a little bit of work to do on our end, but we'll have an update, you know, as we move closer to town meeting for sure.
And I just wanna, I mean, being a member of the Dog Park Committee, I just want to thank Jen publicly. And the committee is fortunate to have Jen working for the Dog Park. And it's one of those things where I know a year ago, Michael was like, no, we need to, we need to stop it. And we would have lost half our funding, because we are probably gonna be one of the last dog parks that the Stanton Foundation funds. So, thank you for those who supported us last year moving it forward. Thank you for Jen for staying on this through three designers and where, where we're putting it and stuff like that. So it, it is moving, I, it's gonna move forward. We're hoping to break ground in the spring, hoping by the fall, we'll have a dog park. So just, I just want to publicly thank you, Jen, for all the work and effort you've put into it. Because we are hearing from people, they want the dog park. We're in the process, right, the Dog Park is working with a subcommittee to get people who are willing to be volunteers to help do the maintenance, because that is one of the requirements, is that the Dog Park Committee brings in volunteers to make sure the poop is picked up, to make sure the poop bags are taken from inside of the park to outside of the park. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, we, we've had people step up. They were actually having a meeting tonight, as we were meeting, to talk about it. So there are people who are interested. So if you're interested in helping maintain the dog park, reach out to the Dog Park Committee, because I think it's, when it's done.
I say poop at home.
Poop at home, there you go. If only, if only we could require that, Claudia. Poop at home. Yeah, we'll put that in the brochure. Poop at home.
Ash, welcome to Ashland. Poop at home. Put it right on the welcome signs.
That's good.
Yeah, hold it as you're going through.
Oh, I like that, too. You too can pick up poop. I like that one. That's a good one. Okay, anyway. Is there a sunset date? We're, there, we are expecting them to no longer be funding these organizations.
So, no, we have to sign, we have to sign an agreement with them. That we will start construction.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and because of how they do it, they say, okay, we're, we're funding you, we're funding you this amount, here's your check. So, but, I mean, we definitely are gonna do this, right? It's not like we're gonna, but yeah, so that's, that's the, the issue we're dealing with, is we have to get to them and get it approved in the check fairly soon, and then we'll start construction. Okay, moving forward, reviewing discussed the open meeting law complaint dated March 3rd, 2025, filed by Stephen Morgan regarding executive session minutes. We've all seen the open meeting law complaint. As we went to do our executive session, we did a review, we had meeting minutes that we had decided not to release. They've now been approved in executive session, they have a couple of updates. So in our March meeting, we will be able to release them. And, yeah, anything else you want to say about it, Michael? Okay. Okay. Moving on, let's see, town meeting warrant articles. Jen, you're up again. Or is Michael taking this one?
No, no, Jen.
Yeah, so, we have received, I haven't started sort of putting the warrant together yet, but have received a couple notices, one obviously from the Historical Commission, which was discussed previously. We may have three CPA, one, obviously, the Dog Park we just talked about, one project for Cadillac Paint turning into the Ashland Alabority Room. And then also, the Town Clerk's Office has requested some funds to do some historical preservation of records. So working through that, so, and then obviously our normal articles. And then, we may have three bylaws from Planning Board. So they're working on an accessory dwelling unit bylaw there, which Lisa spoke about earlier. There is a floodplain change from FEMA, and it's a small change to our bylaw in our maps. And so they're working on that, as well as just clean up to their site plan review bylaw. It's just really sort of, right now, the special permit and the site plan review language doesn't match up. And there's some language about a community meeting as opposed to a required public hearing, it's pretty straightforward. So, other than that, it'll be more of the standard, sort of, obviously, budget. I haven't, I haven't done all the regular ones yet, so I don't, I don't know yet. But then at our next meeting, I'll have a, I'll have a draft, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that, Jen. So just a couple of notes. Reminder, the BAA grant and Select Board grant application process is open, submissions are due by March 28th, 2025. Susan Roby let me know that she had specifically sent out emails and personal invitations to anyone that has applied in the last, I think she said, two years, so the last four, either four or six grant cycles. So that's that. The Select Board Scholarship Opportunity is open to any graduating senior from, graduating high school senior from Ashland. You don't have to attend Ashland High School, but you do have to live here in Ashland for that. We have a number of volunteer.
Just really quick about the, the scholarship, we're doing two scholarships at two thousand dollars each?
Correct, okay. Yep.
Just to clarify.
And at our, I guess we can talk about it now. I don't know, Joe and Claudia, if you'd like to be our subcommittee again, as you were last year, or?
I would be delighted to.
Okay, Claudia, would you like to continue with that? Wonderful, good. We don't have to vote that, but if you guys are willing to do that, wonderful, thank you. Volunteer opportunities, our Community Preservation Committee have two seats. One is a Housing Authority member, and the other is a Select Board appointment. They did have someone at their meeting last night who was interested, so we'll see what happens there. Conservation Commission has a seat, Council on Aging has three seats. So actually, I think now that's probably two, because we just reduced them to seven. Open Space and Rec has a seat, Stormwater Advisory has a seat, Sustainability has a seat. Next page, and Design Review, but that's a Planning Board appointment. But if you're interested in architecture and design, reach out, fill that out, and that will be reviewed by the Planning Board. Winter Parking Ban is still in effect until March 31st, which means no on-street parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And then textile clothing recycling, you do have to reach out to Simple Recycling, simplerecycling.com to get those picked up. Consent Agenda, if I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, okay, thank you very much. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
And that passes five zero, okay. Joe, did you have a?
I just, I just wanted to ask, Michael, with respect to the police officers that are appointed, is he a, is this a transfer, or is this a?
This is a transfer.
Transfer.
Right now Norfolk County Sheriff.
Oh, cool.
I was, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say a little bit more about it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
That leads us to Town Manager's Report. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a late edition. Do you not see it on there?
I guess I did not print that copy.
Notification of ever so sending you a power line right away, or besides treatment?
No.
Oh, there was another one.
No, there was something else, but for some reason, it was not on the agenda that I printed.
Yeah, so essentially, as, as we're pulling it up, I'll just give you a broad overview. So this is related to the downtown project. And so right now, we have like an overhead wire, like one overhead wire going across near Nix. And so we found a way to do it underneath, and so, but we just need the easement. We need the board to approve the easement to let us do that.
Right, so again, I don't, I guess I did not print the correct agenda that had it on there. So I would say this is something that was not foreseen before we posted the 48 hours.
It, it wasn't.
So, and it's really pretty straightforward. So as was said, they're gonna go through the parking lot of Town Hall to get to the back of the building, because otherwise, we were gonna have one overhead wire and with everything that we're doing. So I have. This is Kramer's property, yep. So we're gonna be giving an easement to their property to be able to do the undergrounding of their utilities moving forward. So if I can get a motion to approve the utility easement agreement. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I do have documents for us to sign. Thank you for reminding whoever said that. Okay. Now we can go to the Town Manager's Update.
Sure, so even though there's just one thing that you see on the agenda, I do have just a few other things, and I'll, I'll just hit you with them real quick. How's that? So the first one you see is the update on the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So our team, working with the Open Space and Recreation Committee, they've already had a couple forums and got some information. They are looking at having two additional forums on March 29th and April 2nd, really to more focus on the specific action items. So again, those will be public. And so I would encourage everybody to attend, even though the team did a bunch of outreach. We didn't have too many people, I think, at the forum. So obviously, the more feedback we get, the better plan we can get. Next, well, speaking of plans, on the Comp Plan. So we were at the stage where the department heads were asked to provide some feedback on each of the strategies. And so we met with JM Goldson last week, and we distributed those strategies, talked about the instructions. And those were due on Monday, so, and I believe everybody got theirs in, I haven't heard anything otherwise. Joe, you, you brought up Manny Toscano, who is going to be our newest police officer. So he is, you know, he is scheduled to start on the 20th, and that's when his swearing-in date is. So you're all welcome? Yep, I believe it's at 11 o'clock, but I'll, I'll confirm. Manny is a very interesting guy, very positive. So I'll, I'll save my comments for his swearing-in. I've got some unique comments for him. But again, very experienced officer, I've got about 20 years in law enforcement. And met Officer Rodkey in, or Sergeant Rodkey, I should say now, in, you know, doing some training. And Sergeant Rodkey was telling him about the department and kind of direction things are going in. And Manny felt like he would be a good fit, as did everybody else. Well, one shy, and that, and we're actually in the process of interviewing that one last officer. Actually, I think I'm meeting with him next week, because now that's part of our process. The, the last step is meeting with me and making sure I'm okay with the guy, or a gal. It's been, it's actually been very, very good. It's been a very, very good process. I'm so glad we, we worked together. We did have a, a meeting of our Community Inclusion Task Force last week. After a little bit of a hiatus, I thought it was very, very good. Makita could probably, you know, after the meeting, tell you, give you her take on it. But we're looking forward to kind of lining up what we want to accomplish in calendar year, '25. And we're on the, on the way to do that. And then finally, Susan and I met with the BAA yesterday, Jack Fleming and Lauren, because it looks like we were gonna incur some more expenses than what we have previously to help basically carry out the marathon, a marathon date. And so I'm pleased to say that the BAA very willingly agreed to pay that extra, those extra funds. So very, very. Security, yeah. We might do that out of our own funds.
We're not quite getting that much money.
Yeah, no kidding. But it was about 30,000 extra dollars, so, and they, yeah, I, I have to say, I've really appreciated Jack Fleming and his team's approach to community relations since he's taken over the BAA. Yep.
Well, thank you for that update, Michael. And we have a Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting the third Thursday, the 20th of March. So that's our next Comp Plan meeting. No? Oh.
That was a very.
I'm like, it was like.
An owl reference?
Owl reference.
To the owl?
No, 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 you're.
Makita's not.
I don't know that you hear owls when you have a stroke, Makita, but, okay.
Can't wait to hear your board report.
I've never heard of that symptom. Anyway, okay, we are, it's time for our board reports. And I'm ho, I'm thinking we can get this done before we have to extend past 10, so.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. So, in, in all seriousness, a lot of activities. So we already talked about the tri-board meeting, which, which we attended, had a good conversation about that. Insofar as the Community Inclusion Committee, we had a first meeting in a long time last week. I think we'll be hearing more out of that committee over the next few months about the, the road ahead. So I don't want to steal any thunder, but they are planning, they're in planning mode right now, trying to figure out what they'd like to accomplish this year and then a couple of years out. So we'll hear more about that later.
I like the name.
Thank you. We'll talk more about that a little later.
Okay.
Anyway, and then finally, the, the Subcommittee on Committee Appointments is gonna have, I guess, are we calling it sort of like an open house, or like, sort of like a, just sort of like a?
Open discussion with board and committee members, yeah.
Yes, open discussion with board and committee members, coming up on Saturday, March 15th at 10:00 AM. And we'll be, just want to hear their thoughts about their experiences on the committees. You know, what they think's going great, what they think they'd like to see some improvement in. And we're gonna be taking all that into consideration as we finalize our notes and come back to this committee with some recommendations around process.
We have about 30 people who have responded already.
Excellent.
Yeah.
It's good to hear.
Might not fit in that small room.
Yeah, we may, well, you know, we'll have to figure, figure it out. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Makita. Claudia?
We had a school building committee meeting last week, and I just bring that up mostly to bind everybody that we are waiting for 3.2 million dollars from the federal government that we earned using, for, as a tax credit, based on some of the sustainability features of both the Mindest School and the Public Safety Building. So that's 3.2 million dollars that we're supposed to be getting. And currently, I think that we would have had it by now if, if we had not had a change in administration. And so it's kind of being held up. And then I did attend a webinar about engaging, trying to, increasing engagement in town meeting. And a couple of the takeaways for me were, you know, whether or not we should have a conversation about having town meeting on Saturdays. I know some communities do that, but it doesn't seem like a ton of them do, but some do. And then the other thing is, we can't, can't broadcast live from the auditorium, right?
Yeah, we do, we do. They broadcast live.
Okay, so, well, it's because I actually have always been there, but, in any case. It's true, too, it's actually true. But so, one thing would be to have call-in questions, let people participate from home.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to vote from home, but they could certainly make comments.
No, absolutely not. They can't vote, but they did, and some communities do that, where they allow for calling.
Do you know which communities? It'd be great to reach out to them and see how it worked.
I might have to review that.
Okay. Who, was that an MMA webinar?
I think it was.
Was it the one that?
It was, it was moderators, that, town moderators who were mostly running it.
Sure, we can find out.
Yeah, the one gentleman from Westboro, I should have written down their names, but I didn't.
That's okay.
He, he was very, so anyway, so I thought that that was, those were a couple of things that maybe we should think about doing.
Nice, okay. Joe?
Okay, Madam Chair, just real quickly, I have some information to provide to all of you since I've come back with respect to the Quiet Zones for, for the railroads. There was a webinar that I was on. And so the information was provided. One of the, one of the key issues that they were really concerned about was the liability. And that, and that, you know, it just, you know, again, you know, who's gonna hold on to that liability aspect of it? And that's why a lot of the communities that have these Quiet Zones, their, the, the number of trains that go through are not like what we have. And so it's based on the activity and the, the use of the rails.
The tracks.
The tracks, so, and who has the, and who has those. So that's, that was it, and I have the information. Matter of fact, they sent it to me, I requested it. So I'll email it to everybody, so you all have that.
Yeah, it would be, it might be something we want to talk about at a meeting to, because get an update on where we are with our Quiet Zone and the funding and the timing of that, and the engineering, and then a determination if we still want to try and move forward.
Well, and that, and again, based on what's been going on over the last 60 days, federal funding is.
Could be a question.
Could be a, a major question with respect to that, so God only knows where that's gonna end up. I want to just give a quick shout-out to the folks of Habitat for Humanity. They've gone through their permitting process, they got all their rocaes and their permits. And we're looking to do shovel in the ground at 478 Main Street sometime mid-May. So we'll be having a new affordable housing project in town off of Main Street, which is nice. And I, I saw something that was a little disturbing with respect to CPC said they were looking for a member on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I thought, I could have sworn that Steve Greenberg was the representative, but apparently, that's not the case.
So I think there's an important clarification that needs to be made. That seat is actually the Affordable Housing Committee.
Committee.
Which we don't have anymore. Which we don't have anymore.
Right, which we don't have anymore.
Oh, it was stated as the Affordable Housing Trust.
And that's, yeah, uh, and Steve was on it at the time, as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Committee, that's correct.
So, do we need to either, one, update our CPC bylaw to say trust versus committee? Because we should have someone from Affordable Housing sitting on, sitting with CPC to look at Affordable Housing.
If you can make that, if you can make that, that change?
Yeah.
I would suggest doing it, yeah.
So how would we, would that be?
I'll have to look into that.
If you could look into that?
All right, great, thank you.
And other than that, and then, um, I, I will be, uh, not in attendance physically, uh, I'll be, uh, on Zoom for the next month or so. After my, I'll be pitching for the Boston Red Sox after the surgery, so it'll, it'll be good.
Well, actually, you're lucky, because I believe we're all gonna be remote for the next select board meeting, because they're gonna be painting this room.
Oh, they're gonna be painting?
So.
Oh, that's right.
You might want to remind us of that thing.
I believe our next, I believe our next select board meeting is going to be fully remote.
Okay.
Be, for two reasons, one, because the potential for remote participation ends at the end of March, and we're like, okay, let's do it in March, so where our next select board meeting, and this is for the public as well, will not be here in person, it will only be via Zoom, um, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they, I, is there any anticipation that that will be extended again, or no?
At the state level, so there's been a lot, so, I'll, I'll talk about it as part of my board report.
And, and that's all, and that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Randy?
Um, so I've got a couple things coming up, um, I'm going to be attending the Ashland Education Foundation Casino Nights Saturday night, I'm gonna win big, win, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay for college. Don't tell me it's all fake money, no, kidding.
It, it's all fake money.
It's all fake money, but, but, um, it'll be, it'll be a good, it'll be a good time, and, um, our schools will benefit from that, so.
On a, on, on a side note for that, if you are not able to attend, like I am, because my daughter's coming home this weekend, you can go online and bid for some silent auction items, so you can, if you can't attend in person, you can go online and bid on the silent auction.
And, and you can just donate if you're not a gambling person either, right?
To the Ashland Education.
That's okay, too.
There's actually, there's actually, if you go to the, if you go to the, like, I received an email about it, because I've been in the past, you can just donate money if you'd like, and not worry about bidding, sorry. Oh, it was a lot of fun, yep.
And, uh, just for folks to know, if, if they don't know already, the Ashland Education Foundation, um, puts through grants that teachers and, and, uh, folks in our schools request, so that money goes back into the, to the classrooms, so.
So they've done some pretty dramatic things, um, through the years, uh, the STEM lab at the middle school was an Ashland Education Foundation project. Yep, iPad's that they bought, um, they bought, um, 3D printers, you know, for us, um. Yeah, the shared days, I remember it was back in the kitchen.
Mom prom was fun.
I avoid that.
We, uh.
And that's what my husband called it, too, just in case, just in case.
That's what this whole town called it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it's had, uh, many iterations through the years.
Yep.
So, but, uh, so yeah, so that's this upcoming Saturday, um, I'm also gonna be going to the, the YMCA Marathon Breakfast, which I think is the 14th.
Friday, March 14th, yep.
So that's coming up, so, well, it's more about.
Celebrating their runners.
And supporting the, the YMCA.
Yep.
Hopefully getting an update, maybe we'll, there'll be another update or something, I'm looking at Yolanda, because Yolanda's involved in it. I know nothing, so, um, and then we talked about comprehensive plan on the 20th, so we've been, we've had a reprieve for the last, you know, month or so.
We had a break in, in February.
So, as, as we gear up for what will be a, um, very.
A bunch of work moving forward, yeah.
A very intense stretch, so.
Yep.
So I encourage people to keep an eye out for, for things that are gonna be coming up for the comprehensive plan in, in the following, in the following months, and I do owe, I'm sorry, I, I just, it just popped into my brain, I need to reach out to the farmer's market about dates for us, for tables, so.
I was gonna ask you about that after the meeting.
I, I have not done that, so I will do that.
Because they're gonna start planning.
Yep, and I will, I will get all that squared away, and that's, um, and that's pretty much it for me, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so a couple things, so, uh, Joe, you asked about the extension of the remote meeting. So it's part of what's called the Municipal Empowerment Act at the state level, they are discussing it as an MAPC member, as an MMA member, they have asked people to reach out to your legislatures, and if you want, I think MMA may even have a letter or an email that says, please move this forward and get it done, and make it permanent before March 31st. So if you have the time and the energy, I would ask that we all do that, because let's just make it permanent, let's not just keep pushing it a year down the road and a year down the road, because there are communities that are trying to make plans, and right now, if they have town meeting in April, or if they have meetings in April, they can't plan them for remote meetings. So that's the municipal power, um, MAPC, I'm the Ashland representative to the MAPC Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We had our winter council meeting virtually this morning. Uh, Mark Drazen, who is the director, gave a really nice update, talking about some of the, sort of countering some of the things that were going on in Washington, I believe they make it, his, the whole thing available, so when it's available, I'll let people know, because I can't repeat how he said it, he said it very eloquently, so just something to think about. Uh, last Thursday, I had the Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting, we had some good discussions, we had one of the other subregions with us, and with that, on Friday, March 28th, at, I think, 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning, is the legislative breakfast for Metro West Regional Collaborative, and we're doing it with, I think it's either Swap or Magic, one of the other subregions, and it's going to be in Medfield. I think I forwarded that to people, at the Thayer House, um, at the Thayer, Medway, so at the Thayer House in Medway. Uh, again, if you can take, if you come, can come, it's a great way, one, to meet other people who are select board, planning board, and I sent out the invitation, I think, to this whole board and planning and some other people. Uh, and then also, a lot of legislators are there, and I think because it's gonna be two regions together, there'll be a few more people, we haven't heard who yet. We, we always hope to get Karen as the Senate President, but I know it's tough, and if she can't be there, someone from her delegation is always there to, to chat. Let's see, this Friday morning, so MMA is having their legislative events, and you know, you have these two organizations that are doing great things, sometimes they compete, uh, so MMA's Legislative Breakfast, they are doing two this Friday and two next Friday, the two this Friday, there's one in Marlborough at the Marlborough Library, and that's from 8:30 to 10:15. If you've never been to the Marlborough Library, it's a nice little building, they have a great space, it's not that far, I'm planning on going this Friday, if someone wants to go, I'm more than willing to carpool. So, just that is information there as well, yesterday, so I'm on one of the regional subcommittees for MMA, and we had one of our meetings yesterday, uh, chatting about regional information, and we're gonna be hopefully having a discussion in the future about ADU, about housing in general, about two and a half, and what does that mean, and how we can look at different funding. Um, so I can keep people posted on that, and then the last thing is, I want to congratulate the Ashland High School Theatrical Society. They performed Anything Goes this weekend, and the last time I saw it here in Ashland was 14 years ago, when my own daughter was a part of it, so it was fun to go back, they did a great job, as always, David Harrington, our theater teacher, does a wonderful job on these productions, costumes, um, set, they were having some technical difficulties with their lighting and with their sound stuff, so um, we'll see what we can help out with there, uh, but again, the, the musical direction, and it's always just a fun event, so congratulations to the Ashland High School Theatrical Society, and that is all I have. Sure?
Do you have any clocks ahead this weekend?
On Sunday, yes, time ahead on Sunday.
That's right.
And, uh, as we said, our next meeting will be virtual, so we won't be here in this room, you'll see us all from our various locations at home, and, uh, I believe that's it, if I can get a motion to adjourn. And, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for watching, thank you for being here, thank all of you for your participation, and thank you, Michael and Jen, and again, our next meeting is Wednesday, March 17th, so between then and now, Happy St. Patrick's Day, and we'll see you in two weeks.